Okay. Please rise as Councilman Hicks provides the invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Thank you for allowing us to meet tonight and make decisions on community that are pleasing to you. Prayers over our first responders and their families and over our military personnel and their families. I lift up in prayer tonight, Gary Rose and his family and friends. He cared dearly for our community. Just let them feel our comfort and healing hands over them and take a moment. Let's just take a moment of silence for. Thank you. Amen. Amen.
Thank you. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, we would never be judged as fraud.
Thank you, Councilman Hicks. All right. We are going to do a presentation for Eric Stay on his retirement from the Guadalupe County Appraisal District. Whereas Mr. Stray began his career with the Guadalupe Appraisal District on April 30th, 1982, and served the entities and taxpayers for nearly 42 years until he retired on February 9th, 2024. And whereas Eric began with the appraisal district initially as a part-time appraiser, staff appraiser, but through his tireless work ethic, continued to gain knowledge and experience that took him through the ranks as lead appraiser of residential appraisal, appraising all land within Guadalupe County, senior appraiser, and finally deputy chief appraiser, where he successfully guided the appraisal district through biennial performance audits performed by the state comptroller's office. And whereas Mr. Stay played a central role in guiding the appraisal district through various obstacles caused by the arrival of the COVID pandemic and ensured timely certification of the appraisal role despite these hurdles. And whereas Mr. Stay, Mr. Stray, I'm sorry, served on the Board of Directors of the Sibolo Creek Municipal Authority, also known as CCMA, from 1997 until 2012, 10 years of which were his chairman. And whereas Mr. Stray actively participated in the reworking of the City of Sibolo Charter in the 1990s. And whereas Mr. Stray has volunteered at polling stations during elections. And whereas Eric is an active member of his church, St. Paul Evangelical Church, serving on the Church Council Cemetery Committee and as youth director. And whereas Eric is a member of the Sibolo Bowling Club. And whereas Mr. Stray can now enjoy his retirement, spending time with his wife, Edna, sons Eric Jr. and Matthew, and his four grandchildren. And now therefore, I, Mark Allen, Mayor of Sibolo, Texas, on behalf of the city council and residents, wish to honor Eric William Stray for his accomplishments, career, and service to the community while wishing him congratulations on his retirement. Eric, if you could come on down to the podium and bring your family with you?
His mom is my, uh, his mom is my neighbor.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
All right. Next, we're going to do the citizens to be heard. This is the only time during the city council meeting that a citizen can address the city council. It is the opportunity for visitors and guests to address the city council on any issue, to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster prior to the start of the meeting. The city council may not deliberate any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the city council may present any factual response to items brought up by citizens. Attorney General Opinion JC 0169, limit of three minutes each. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the council so long as the remarks are about matters of local public concern and not disruptive to the meeting or threatening to the member or any attendee. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person may be requested to leave or forced to leave the meeting because of the viewpoint expressed. This meeting is live streamed. If anyone would like to make comments on any matter regarding the City of Sibolo or on an agenda item and have this item read at this meeting, please email psemics@siblotx.gov and vchapman@siblotx.gov or call 210-566-6111 before 5:00 PM the date of the meeting. And our first citizen to sign up is Lydia Schultz. Lydia, come on up. Welcome. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm just here on behalf of the four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one hundred.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Next up is, is it Debbie Porter? Did I say that right? Welcome, Debbie.
We couldn't hear her. I don't know if anybody-
Is the microphone green?
Green or red, ma'am?
It's red.
Oh, okay. Yeah. If you could just click on it until it turns green. Thank you, Debbie.
Hello, my name is Debbie Porter and I live at 106 Watson Way. My name may sound familiar as I am the one and my husband who got so many of our neighbors to attend the last city council meeting. I typed up a small note, went door to door on Town Creek, Indian Paintbrush, Sunflower, the Estates of Riada Oaks and Enclave of Riada Oaks. I'm also the one who mistyped the city secretary's email address. I heard there were several emails that were returned to them. My bad. Yes, sidewalks are still a want with need, but more than a want, it's a necessity, like for safety. Yes, it will cost a lot of taxpayers' money, something we all pay. A lawsuit when someone is injured or heaven forbid killed will cost the taxpayers' money as well. Today, I was in charge of my grandkids. They wanted to go to the park. Since I didn't have a car seat for the new baby, I couldn't load up the car and take them there. And there was no what way I would let them walk downtown creek to the park. They were very upset with me and I would have loved to have gotten out of the house with them for exercise. As many said at the last meeting, just don't pave it if you aren't going to put sidewalks in. As far as I'm, as far as comparing Dean Road, I was under the understanding that the county paved that, but did anyone ask for sidewalks? As far as the new trail that will be built that we can drive to, to walk, what is the completion date expected on that? That doesn't solve the problem for any of us as we could already drive someplace and then walk as we already do. A person living in a town the size of Sibolo should not have to drive someplace to go on a daily walk. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Debbie. Next up is Jim Porter. Welcome, Jim.
Mayor, I'd like to add to what my wife just said. I fully support her concerns. As I see the city council's vision, it is a community that we're proud of. We are responsive to residents. We've been here since 2009 and really have enjoyed the atmosphere of the City of Sibolo. And I know in some of the certain items, having to deal with the capital projects, including the improvement of Town Creek Road from, I believe it's Green Valley to Whedon. Town Creek Road on the other side of Green Valley does have sidewalks, the newer subdivisions such as Saratoga. I would like to continue that for the improvement of Town Creek Road in the other direction between Southern Way and Whedon. Right now, people are having to walk either in the grass and somebody's property or in a drainage ditch. They're not going to want to do that, so instead they walk on Town Creek Road with traffic zipping by them at a pretty good rate. Sibolo is a great town. It has had several accolades in the past. It's a good place to live, a good place for working. To continue that, we need to continue the safety of our residents. And I think any improvement of Town Creek Road from Southern Way to Whedon needs to have a sidewalk. And I think in that order, let's, the new subdivision seemed to get sidewalks. Let's not forget the older subdivisions that would also need a place for people to be able to safely walk, including our children. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And hey, before you go, I know Councilman Hicks is on our AAMPO. And if, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Joel, but if you don't mind, if you can give him a factual response about the opportunities for grants through sidewalks for AAMPO?
Well, we just had our CIP meeting, Subcommittee meeting prior to this meeting. And we did have that discussion and we have directed our staff to look into what it's going to cost. So, but there are grants out there that we can apply for to see about getting it to help lower the cost. I'm with your wife on the fact that, you know, a life is more important than the money is because I'm one of those that advocated for sidewalks on Bordfell Road and we finally got them. And I've been advocating for 1103 and we're finally in the position where we'll be getting those as well. So I'm totally with you on that, but it, there's a process. We're going to look into the AAMPO for those funds. So.
I just know that a lot of the citizens that are along Town Creek Road are subdivisions that connect the Town Creek Road.
The subdivisions, y'all are, y'all are old, old town. Y'all are like I-
I apologize, Councilmember Hicks, but because of the limitations the law places on this, a discussion of this type is inappropriate. I'd ask that you move on.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate your concern.
Thank you.
Next up is Maggie Titterington. Maggie, welcome.
Good evening, Council. You, you can hear me. I'll just check. Yes, the green. It's just really, it's really low.
Okay.
Good evening. Very happy to be here. Next Tuesday is our monthly chamber luncheon and we have the Better Business Bureau that is going to come in and speak. There has been a lot of AI scams lately going on. And so they are going to reveal the top 10 scams in South Texas for 2023 that are rolling into 2024. They're going to talk about how con artists are using the dark web and then the seven best ways to stay bulletproof against AI-generated scams. So really interesting topics. So if you have not RSVP'd, you have until midnight tonight to do so. Also, please mark your calendars because again, we're going to be celebrating Sibolo businesses opening up on April 3rd. And I apologize, it is early, but 8:30 AM Buffalo Valley Dental Care is going to be doing their grand opening and ribbon cutting. Be happy because it was going to be eight and we talked them into 8:30. And then on the 5th of April is Tiff's Treats. That is at 10:00 AM. And then on April 17th is the UPS Store Sibolo location at 4:00 PM. We're very excited and as was shared in our State of the City, Sibolo, there's so much growth of economic drivers, retail, restaurants and stuff. And we're just very happy to be able to partner with you all and to celebrate with you at these ribbon cuttings. Thank you.
Hey, real quick, I-
What time is the UPS?
The UPS is 4:00 PM.
Is it 4:00 PM? Okay. For some reason, I thought, I read five written down.
Yeah. And then April 5th, Tiff's Treats is 10:00 AM. And then April 3rd is 8:30.
What about Mod Pizza? Did they contact you all?
Not yet. But Lydia is in talks with them. So I'm excited about that.
Because I had heard that a citizen, excuse me, saw a handwritten note on the door. I think that was either the 25th or 27th of March. I can't remember which.
26. I hear 26.
Okay. 26. Okay.
They could be doing a soft opening and then doing the big old shebang a little bit later. But yes, as soon as we find out, we will let you go.
Okay. Thank you, Maggie. All right. Next up is Robbie Berg. Welcome, Robbie. Where are you at? Did she step out? Okay. Well, we'll circle back around here if she comes back. Okay. Next up is Amy Sebeck? I'm sure if I read your writing correctly. I'm sorry, Amy. Welcome, Amy.
Good evening. Again, I'm Amy Sebeck and I live off of Town Creek Road at 129 Spy Glass Cove. And I'm here just to say thank you for your time and listening to us last meeting. And I thank you, Councilman Hicks, for going after those funds. I just respectfully ask that it continues. That's a .7 stretch of road from Cove, from Cove Lane all the way to Bentwood Pass. And that's not even a mile stretch of the road, as you're aware. There are no sidewalks, so we're walking in an unsafe situation. But most importantly, there are three cross streets that students wait at in the mornings for bus pickup. And so I just think we're putting ourselves at a high risk of an accident happening without some sort of safety situation going on with the sidewalks or a crossroad or something like that. So thank you very much for your time and all of your effort for sidewalks.
Thank you, Amy. Next up is Brandy Zakowski. Welcome, Brandy.
Hi, Brandy Zakowski, owner of Fluffbox Brewing Salon. And I'm here just to observe leadership for a program. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you, Brandy. All right. Next up is Jen Greaves. Come on down, Jen.
Jennifer Greave. Am I on? I feel like I can't hear myself. I just want to say thank you all for coming tonight because I know you're going to be here until midnight again. And we appreciate all the volunteer roles you do. Couple things really quick. Sidewalks on Town Creek. I'm part of Bentwood Ranch HOA, so I'm getting a lot of calls, communication. They're asking for everyone to help. So I'm not here on behalf of Bentwood Ranch HOA because I can't do that, but I am here as a concerned citizen and neighbor. And they would really like to see how we can help get some of that. I do drive in all the time and there are lots of people walking up that. The second one I'm here on really quick is the light down here at 78 and South Main. I've put in a C-click fix several times and people comment on it, which is great. But if you look at it, there's the green arrow only sometimes to turn left onto 78. And a lot of people are going across South Main, like where the new Sibolo vet's going to be, and then to turn down Schaefer because it's a good cut through to 1518. Shh, it's a secret. Sorry, I let it out of bed. But if you're constantly honked at and there's some serious road rage happening there because people want to turn left onto 78, but it's one lane. And then you have, it's probably not 100% correct, but we call it a pork chop. You know, that little bumpy thing right there? So if you want to kind of scoot over a little bit, you can. But I don't know if it's technically legal because you're on the bumps. And so basically, I'm like, were we supposed to have two lanes? Because why does the green light sometimes turn into an arrow or sometimes not? You know what I mean? So it's really impeding traffic flow. And I'm not telling you how many people are honking and getting very angry. And it's like, well, where do you want us to go? I'm not turning left. So that's my second one. And then the last one I have really quick, because gosh, that three minutes goes fast, is I know we haven't officially approved the city council policy directives for the city meetings procedures. I was hoping to see it on the agenda tonight. I don't think I do see it on there.
So Jen, if I can interrupt real quickly, we did have it on the consent agenda last time. So it was approved at our last council meeting.
Oh, it was officially approved?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's on your agenda. I didn't see it there either, but that's okay. I'm flying really quick right now. The only reason why I'm bringing it up though is about the kind of excused absences procedure. Like I understand unexcused absences. And I read the policy really quick and I don't actually see that in there. But what I'm understanding is it's just kind of a known thing. If you're missed three excused absences, that means that you can be booted off the board. And I think that if it was unexcused absences, totally get it. But we have people coming up with maternity leave. We have people that are sick, COVID, Christmas concerts that are mandatory for kids' grades. So that like three excused absences being a reason to boot somebody off a commission, kind of, like I said, I didn't technically see it in the writing, but that's what I'm hearing. So I just wanted to get that out there. That's all I had to say. Awesome.
Thank you very much, Jen. Peggy, do you mind clarifying that? It is a matter of factual response, right, as far as the policy?
Has been approved on the consent agenda. It's being placed on every agenda. I already briefed it to the Parks Commission. It's being briefed to the Planning and Zoning and EDC this week. And it is on their agenda. It's later in the agenda under Discussion Action Items. And so the other one, under the old policy, it does, it does say that an absence, either excused or unexcused, after three missed meetings, they can be removed.
Can be.
And that is up to the council. But it is up to the chairman under the old policy to make sure that that person knows that they're, that they're getting close to that timeframe. And there has been times that we've had somebody that was on maternity or whatever because they just had a baby. Those are exceptions to the rule. And we've brought those to the council and that we've extended those because, you know, there are things that do happen. But everyone knows when they come onto the committee. I know that this question is asked all the time by the board that are by the council. You know when your meetings are. You know that you've got to, you know, when to attend and everything. But like I said, this is being rewritten and some things will change.
Thank you, Peggy.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Peggy. Yes, Rocha.
I just want to point out that the policies of the city council do not trump state law. And state law does provide the city council generally with the authority to appoint or remove any one of your commission members at any time for any reason or no reason. And so while the policies are those of the city council, I don't want to mislead the public as to what your obligations and duties and powers are. And so I wanted to make, make sure the city council was aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. All right. Next up is Rick.
Dylan Beck.
Rick Dylan Beck, sorry. How you doing, Rick?
It was in a hurry and I wrote fast.
Welcome, Rick.
Well, thank you for having me again. I was here at the last council meeting. Again, I'm Rick Dylan Beck. I live in 213 Nicholas Cove, which is on the enclave of Riada Oaks. And I'm here to advocate for the sidewalks on Town Creek. I'm an avid, I walk my dogs daily up Sunflower, particularly Sunflower, we have to go on. Town Creek is short amount away. And with the, the additional traffic seems to be going to Steel High School in the mornings and evenings and some of the distracted drivers on the road. It gets kind of nerve wracking at times going down Town Creek. And also, I've got two grandchildren, two and a half and one eight months old, which they're going to, they spend about one day a week a piece at our house. We like to go to that park at something in the Sunflower. Y'all build some wonderful parks in our neighborhood. We want to be able to access those in a safely with our grandchildren, like the porters have said. And I do appreciate you looking up for the funds and stuff like that. And I think it's really, really important for our little community there on Town Creek to have a safe access to all these beautiful parks that y'all have built. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rick. And one thing to keep in mind, and this is just a factual response, is that the AAMPO did have, I think it was what, $10 million worth of funding available left over from the last time they did a call for projects. And so the, the money for safe sidewalks is something that a lot of cities don't even utilize. And so what we do think that we will be able to, to have an advantageous position with the AAMPO to utilize some of this funding. The reason why it makes sense to use situations like this is that oftentimes the city will put in 20% and they'll get 80% matching. And so it's a better overall use of city funds if we're able to, to, to get 5X your money, right? And so, so that's why we're choosing to go down that route. So, thank you. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine. I'm sorry, wait a minute. Before I move on, Peggy, you have two to be read. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to skip ahead. Go ahead, Peggy.
The first one is from Linda Sanderson. I heard that, I heard that there is another meeting tonight for sidewalks on Town Creek. I won't be able to attend due to being out of town on business. As I mentioned before, sidewalks are a must. I've been paying even closer attention to the amount of walkers, runners, and cyclists on Town Creek. I also noticed that Sibolo PD had a patrol car parked on Town Creek several times a week or so ago. To me, that means there is a speed issue. If so, that puts pedestrians in danger of being hit. I believe the city is growing at such a fast rate that we would want to be proactive with sidewalks instead of reactive. Thank you for listening to my concerns again and those of my fellow citizens. Regards, Linda Sanderson. Second one is from Lacy LaFoy. I have been told that this evening's city council meeting will also include in its agenda a follow-up discussion regarding sidewalks on Town Creek Road. Unfortunately, neither my husband nor I can be present this evening. However, please know that the importance of building sidewalks along this road is no less important and quite honestly grows more and more important each day as our community continues to grow and we have more and more walkers along this route. Let's please make this a priority for the safety and well-being of our friends and neighbors. Thanks so much, Lacy LaFoy.
Thank you very much. All right. We're going to move on to consent agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on February 27th, 2024. B, approval of the final plat of Venado Crossing, Unit 5. And that's it.
That's it. I, I looked through the PIA and there was nothing there. I know that county, that staff looked. I'll make a motion to approve. Oh.
Is this still paperwork that I got the other day? Is it been updated? Does this have been denied by Planning and Zoning 60?
It was.
Not a like 60 vote pending to be commented. Oh, now it's not.
Yeah.
Okay. So Joel, you made the motion to?
Accept.
Okay. We got a second? I got a motion and a second. See, please do your electronic voting. Is this, is this set up? Are y'all still working? Okay, there we go. All right. All right. Looks like it passed seven, I'm sorry, six zero or seven zero. It is seven. Okay. All right. Moving on to item number eight, Staff Update. Administration, Strategic Management Workshop, Access to, Into City Hall During Strategic Management Workshop, Requests for Proposals, Requests for Bids, Requests for Qualifications and Capital-
Hello?
Okay. It's working now. Strategic Grant Partnership Applications, Public Safety Design, I'm sorry, Facility Design, Requests for Proposals, Requests for Qualifications, Fire ISO Study, City Hall- City Hall furniture, capital improvement program projects. Haverhill Road, Town Creek Drainage Phase Two, Dean Road, Bolton Road, Lower Seguin Road and design and bidding for Green Valley Roads, two sections, Silver Wing, Firebird and Town Creek. Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is all written out. I will hit send after I present this to you. And I will abbreviate what I say verbally and you can read the in-depth when I send it to you. On the strategic management workshop, what I want to address first is access into city hall for the public during the workshop. So the front entry will not be open to the public due to the installation of the vestibule exterior doors. Our contractor always said that they would work with us not to install them during business hours. So, um, they will be here on Saturday installing the vestibule doors, the exterior ones. We'll have signs on the front of city hall saying access to the strategic management workshop is on back. We'll have signs out here and that'll lead them from the parking lot to one of these two doors. We won't do both, we'll just do one side. So I just want you to know that public will have access, uh, but it is an alternative access. And then the strategic management workshop, you have the agenda for that. Like past workshops, this is a really working meeting. And so the material that we provide will be at the meeting. And I just want to say that what we're emphasizing this year is why? Why is strategic planning and strategic management important? And we're going to ask that big question so that council can answer with staff, why is it important that we're focusing on your highest priorities? Uh, I have more notes here, but I'll keep that brief. And then request for proposals and invitations to bids. We do have the benefit broker services out and this is for our healthcare benefits. And so that will have a deadline of March 14th, that's this week. Also, I want you to know that we have the invitations to bid on the 2024 Siblo Street Preservation Package. That preservation package is for three roads. Buffalo Crossing, Bentwood Ranch, Bentwood Pass. We're going to start with Buffalo Crossing. That's the neighborhood that did a neighborhood traffic management program process. We're going to get that project done first. Bids are due March 28th. The earliest award that's us coming to council would be the late April meeting. And the strategic grant partnership applications, I just want to correct the screen and what I put on the agenda. It should have been four, not eight. That was my typo. So we do have four applications. You will have that in your next packet. So on March 26th, uh, Brian Huggins will have those in your packet, a summary of those four applications. We're not asking for you to make a decision on March 26th. This is your first go around. You have a $10,000 budget. I will tell you that the requests exceed 10,000 when you add all four up. But we want you to have the opportunity, March 26th, to receive the information, ask questions. And then we'll schedule that to come back in April. And again, it's our first time for you to do strategic partnership grants. And so we want to make sure that we're supporting you through that process.
I'm glad you corrected that eight over four because I'm sitting there mathematically going, okay, so each one gets a thousand dollars, basically. That's what I was thinking.
So I think the process will listen to them and then we'll, we won't vote that night. We'll just listen and then consider and then make our selection later. Okay, Mr. Reed, I'm sorry.
No problem. And then the public safety facility design, uh, the members of the council CIP subcommittee have already heard this. So for the benefit of the rest of council and the public, uh, Brian Huggins will make a presentation on March 26th to highlight the floor plan and the elevations that have been designed by our architects who you authorized to move forward with the design to develop probable construction costs. We want your feedback on that because if you're good with that, the architect's coming back in April and we don't want a discussion around the floor plan. We want them to be here to tell you the opinion of probable construction cost for this project based upon this design is. And that's based upon the design to date, meaning the level of percent of construction plans done. We wanted you to have that because that was our commitment to you last year when you authorized the architect to proceed. With that update and any questions you have for the architect, they will go back to work and return no later than the first meeting in July to give you their final opinion of probable construction costs and all related construction costs so that you can have confidence that at your first meeting in August, should you decide to put this on the ballot, you have a figure that we can stand comfortably behind. Uh, the fire ISO study, uh, Chief Troncoso will be making a presentation in April on the progress to date. The consultant has, uh, written an initial draft report. Chief Troncoso, uh, is reviewing that, will be briefing me on it. But I'm really excited, uh, for you to see the findings of our consultant and the recommendations. So again, that's in April. Uh, the city hall furniture, I just need all of you to know that this room next week will be a staging and storage space for all new furniture, including the council chairs for the dais and for the back conference room. So they'll arrive on Monday. They will be assembled through the week and installed by the end of the week. The council chamber will be used, as I said, for the storage and assembly. The installers will start on the south wing. And in advance, tell staff you need to vacate your office for this day, get the furniture in, then they'll go back in. And then they'll move to the north wing. So just an update there. I guess that means at your next council meeting, you'll have new chairs.
All right.
And then, um, just really fast, the Haverhill Road and Town Creek Drainage Phase Two project remains on schedule as we have recently been updating you. But I think it's important that I tell you now, city staff, uh, is relocating the water main that is in conflict at FM 78 tonight. So March 12th beginning at 10:00 PM and we'll have services restored by 6:00 AM. City staff has, uh, notified the affected residents and have distributed cases of water during the shutdown. Uh, Dean Road and Bolton Road both remain on schedule to be done by mid-April. And then Lower Seguin Road will start in May. That's the conclusion of my report. I'm going to hit send on this.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay. Okay, um, pass the mic to Katie.
I just wanted to mention, I know we get it in our report, but I'm not sure how many people actually look at the agenda attachments. Um, Animal Services gave their report in January, they had 373.5 volunteer hours. That is amazing. That equates to 46.7 days, basically two full-time employees for us just in volunteer hours. That is huge. So thank you for volunteering. That is a massive uptick in the amount of hours. I remember not so long ago, it was like 20 hours a month. This is huge. So thank you to all of our volunteers and to our staff who's doing such a good job recruiting them.
My, my wife is actually fostering two little kittens right now. They're like this big. All right, um, any update from the police department? Frederick?
Just one update.
Come on up to the podium, sir.
Frederick Andrews, for the record, chief of police. So if you don't have any updates about the, this month's report, one of the things I was going to ask mayor and council is, well, the police department obviously, uh, has done some ride-alongs. I know that Ms. Sanchez Stevens has come out and rode with some of the officers. One of the things I would like if council would consider is conducting, uh, a police ride-along. Uh, obviously we want to be very considerate of your time, uh, you know, three, maybe four hours or all day if you like. But I think it would be a great opportunity for our mayor and council, obviously, to look at our police operations, uh, have an opportunity to look at our fleet and just, uh, some of the things that we do as a police department. Uh, I, you know, for one, don't want to speak for Ms. Sanchez Stevens, but I know that the police officers were very excited to have her there to talk about, uh, the, the patrol operations and day-to-day operations. So it's something I would like you to consider. We would be willing to, uh, make that work with your schedules, uh, however that may be.
Thank you for that opportunity. And should we schedule these through you?
Yes, I mean, I can work through Ms. Peggy and, uh, obviously, uh, through Leanne and Ms. Peggy, we can get you scheduled, uh, individually, um, and we'll work around your schedule as, uh, as stated. Any questions, uh, with, uh, this month's report?
Nope, I think we're good.
Just want to say thank you, chief, for that invitation. Uh, it was very eye-opening myself having gone to the ride-along. I think it's further eye-opening also participating in the, uh, police academy just as well. Uh, and I would encourage the rest of council, if you haven't participated in that already. It's just great, uh, to, um, hear from staff themselves, hear from the officers themselves and what they've encountered over the years, uh, patrolling our city and, and what they've encountered as far as, you know, offenders. Do they live here? Do they not live here? Seeing statistics over the years, uh, it's a wealth of information that is very, very useful, um, moving forward as we continue to grow. So thank you for that opportunity, just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, and, and just finally, I know mayor and council is very busy, right? But believe me, it, it really would mean a lot. So, you know, if you have time, I certainly will do everything I can to make sure that it's a meaningful experience. If there's something you want to see, should you decide to do that, we'll make sure that that happens as well. So that opportunity is there, should you, uh, look, choose to take it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'll, I think I'll take you up on that.
And one last thing, would it be a possibility to have a very condensed, maybe, uh, kind of like an academy, but like a, a condensed version maybe for council to participate?
Absolutely, I could talk with Mr. Reed. We could see if that is something that you want. We can probably get like a condensed presentation, maybe, uh, that first hour or so. And then maybe, uh, then to have our council member paired with, uh, some of the officers to go out and just look at day-to-day operations. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, Animal Services, I think we covered that, right? Okay. Thanks, Katie. All right, next up, executive session. The city council will convene an, an executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 551 dot 071, consultation with attorney. In 551 dot 087, economic development to deliberate and seek legal advice regarding the following. A, Legros versus City of Siblo. B, enforcement of code violations at 10833 IH10. C, status of the toll road litigation. D, implementing video technology for law enforcement purposes. And E, project gateway. The time? 11D? 11 doesn't have a D. You talking about 12D?
It's 11, it just continues with 11.
Okay. I'm sorry, my next section started as 12 on my agenda. Okay, so 12D or 11D, either one? Okay. And this is discussion, action and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with JMO Modular LLC to purchase the modular office building for the Animal Services Department? Is that the one? Okay. The time is now 7:13. We will be going into executive session starting now. All right, we are going to resume from executive session. The time is now 8:35 PM. Item 11A, can I get a motion to table? On y'all's agenda, I think it's 12A, but?
Uh, 10A, and I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to table, um, 10A to the next council meeting.
Second. Got a motion and a second on, it's, uh, 10A on y'all's agendas? Okay, we got a motion and a second. Do your electronic voting, please.
It's an ordinance.
By what it is rather than the numbers?
Okay, uh, I, I make a motion to table the ordinance, uh, 10A ordinance of the City of Siblo, Texas for a temporary waiver with conditions to planning regulations for certain real property located, um, 10833 IH10, Frontage Road.
Okay. All right, Joel, go ahead and vote. All right, so we have 7-0. All right, we're going to move on to. This is 12A. 11A on y'all's. Okay. 12A. 12A, y'all's agendas are old. Okay. So discussion, action on the replat of Lot 1 Siblo Business Park. Ms. Huerta.
I'll make a motion to table this and move it to.
I'll make a motion to table this and move it to the next council meeting on the 26th.
Motion and a second, please, electronic vote. I'm going to move on to 12B. Action, I'm sorry, Discussion, Action on the Holding of Resident Town Hall Meetings. Mr. Reed.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm waiting for the PowerPoint to be brought up. While we're waiting for that, let me just highlight, why am I before you? I am asking, first, what is a date that you would like to schedule your first resident town hall meeting in 2024? Secondly, what day of the week and what time does council prefer for the next resident town hall? And at what location does council prefer to hold the next resident town hall? So, day and time, location, and what topics do you think are relevant for the next town hall? We do have some suggestions in the PowerPoint. It is now up, but let me go. So, this is the overview, but I think the best thing that I can say is that, you know, in the six months that we were out of City Hall, we held at least two town halls, and we had several open houses related to master planning, and we were seeing a decline in attendance. And I was growing concerned, and I imagine each one of you and our staff were concerned. But I'm really happy to report that last week, we did a comprehensive plan, open house, and Ms. Simics was doing the counting for me, and she counted at least 40 residents attended. And so, there's something about holding these at City Hall that was working a lot better than at our private venue that we were very grateful to have for the six months. So, I do want to report that we had a very successful town hall just last week for the comprehensive plan, and I hope that's setting the stage and expectations for this resident town hall, wherever you may make a decision. These are the questions that I would like you to keep in mind while I walk through the presentation, and there, I've already mentioned them before the PowerPoint was up. We work well in this space by setting up eight tables, as shown here. It'll be identical to that because this podium will be smack dab in the middle. And so, we have the welcome table out in the lobby, as you all know. We have a welcome packet we hand to people, and we're explaining it to people when they walk in, go clockwise, and we tell them what subjects are going to be at each table. This has worked extremely well at each one of our resident town hall meetings. We will have chairs and refreshments for the residents, and then, as you may recall, you may have seen the iPads out in the lobby. We ask people if they want to, do a quick survey, and we've gotten good ideas from our residents and an idea of satisfaction when they've attended our past resident town halls. These are past topics. Here's some suggested new topics. And I'll ask at the end, do you have other ideas for topics? Since we were experiencing a decline in attendance while we're at the different venue, we reached out to other cities, you know, is there just a trend in this area with town halls? What we found out is that these three neighbors, this is not the universe, but these three neighbors have not been holding any town halls, so we were not able to gauge what were they doing differently? Because I've asked you, what day and time? What location? What topics do you want to do? We were trying to see, is there some magic that they have? And we found that they are not holding town halls, so no outcome from that. So, staff discussed at length our previous resident town halls, and we have the following recommendations, suggestions. Frequency, schedule one per year versus two per year. It's just a suggestion. Day of the week, a Saturday versus a weekday. Let's try Saturday and see if that's any more successful. We may find that it's not. Location, City Hall versus the community center, or maybe a city park. You would be taking a chance that the weather's going to cooperate. We did not, as a staff, recommend any private venues. We've had discussions, I've had discussions with some council members about, maybe there is a private venue that you want to try. And so, those are absolutely on the table, but staff stuck with public locations. Incentives, do you want to offer a raffle or a bingo card for attendance? I've seen this in other jurisdictions that I've worked in. You get a card when you walk in, you have to go to each table, each table punches your card, and at the end, you put that in, and there's a little prize drawing. It's amazing, I'm just going to say it, in the city of, the previous city that I worked for, when we went to Sun City, man, those residents, that's a retirement community, they loved that. So, it works for some members of the public, maybe more than others. Partnership booths, why not invite the YMCA, HEB, Santicos, or the Senior Citizen Program, others? So that, in addition to city topics, we have a partner there with us. And make it a family-friendly environment. Maybe there's a police booth with police and fire personnel, or we have had a booth at the Chambers Annual Event over in Selma where we had costumes for kids to put on. So, we could do family-friendly things with parents bringing their kids, so kids could dress up in a police officer or firefighter outfit and get a photo. That's the conclusion of my presentation. We're going to take notes and make sure that we follow your direction, and so the first one is, do you want to continue resident town hall meetings?
Mr. Reed, could you go back to the slide of the potential topics that we could look at?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, I'll start with new topics, and then, these are the past topics.
Okay, let's go to the new topics.
New topics.
Okay. So, one thing that I think would, that I'm getting a lot of questions on, is the, well, two things, actually. So, one of which is the citywide trail system.
Okay.
I think if we could maybe visit that one again and have a map up on a, you know, like a poster board up there, as well as we could identify some funding opportunities within the, you know, within the, you know, next to the map, I guess, and then also have some timelines on there. They don't have to be set in stone right now, just rough timelines of what we're thinking currently. And then, the other thing is about businesses that are under construction right now. That's one of the main things I get asked on a regular basis, is, you know, what's being built at Green Valley and 1103, or what's being built across from Steel? If we could have maybe a booth to set up that gives people the list of what businesses are coming to each of the locations that are under construction right now, so that way, people can get their answers in one central spot, instead of having, you know, 15 people ask the same question on social media. Katie?
So, the town halls were brought up years ago because there were a lot of communication issues within the city that kind of came to a head with the Toll Road. The advertising for the Toll Road public hearings and things like that were not done as well as they could have been, and it caused a lot of problems where people were not aware that it was happening. And so, there was a Communication and Technology Advisory Committee that was put together that I was on. We made like an 80-page report that we presented to council, and town halls were a part of that. We were trying to look at low-cost options because we don't have a lot of money to spend. So, the town hall came from a good place. I agree that the traffic that we're getting to them is not strong, it's not strong enough to, if I'm looking at the number of staff that we have at those, and I'm thinking of an average hourly rate, and how much we're paying staff to set up for it, to be at the event, and to tear down for five people, it's not fiscally responsible for us to continue on in the way that we're doing. So, I'm glad that you're bringing this to us, looking for ideas to be successful. So, it's kind of like The Little Mermaid, I want to be where the people are. We have to find where the people are. We know they're not going to come to us. They're much less likely to come to us for the meeting, so we need to figure out, where are the people? Where are these events around town? The Chamber events are great, but you end up with the same people at the Chamber events every time. You end up with local officials, you end up with some business owners. It's the same people every time. We're not getting to the bulk of the residents. We have our demographics that we can look at, we just had a census done, so we know the average ages of our population. We know, based on the different little pieces, I don't remember what they're called, the little baby districts, we know where those ages and family types are located around the city, so we can be strategic in where we plan on having these by looking at that. If you're a family with a bunch of little kids, it's very hard to go to a town hall because if you have kids like mine, they're going to run around like psychopaths, and you can't have the conversation that you want about things because your kids are crazy. If you're an older person, maybe living at the Brooks or one of our senior facilities, maybe you don't have transportation to get to something, and so maybe hosting an event there. Along with that, targeting the topics to the populations that we are aiming for, having very targeted town halls as opposed to general town halls. We can see that the general town halls aren't doing so hot, maybe doing a specific town hall at a, at the senior center during the day where we know we already have seniors coming in. It's open to the public, but we can increase, maybe it would be a double benefit, we would increase traffic to the senior center, plus have a built-in audience there, and then talk, find the topics that they're interested in to present on. They may not be interested in the, I'm looking at this list, they might not be interested in redistricting, they may not care about that, but maybe they're really passionate about the Public Safety Facility Bond Program. And then, that would be a good topic to open up to them.
To your point there, Katie, I mean, if we did it at a summer night, Sibolo Summer Nights...
Yeah, I was about to say the exact same thing, Joel.
And we already have people coming to that event. We already have people coming to Sibolo Fest, which is a little tricky because I know our staff has already pulled really thin there. But if we had just kind of info booths where people are able to ask those questions, that may be better, because then we're not asking them to come to us, they're already here. We're going to meet them where they're at. I think that some of the things that the mayor mentioned and that are even on this list, we have really great maps on our website. I'm not a huge fan of our website in general, but the map section is really great, and we have a map already that shows businesses and developers coming to the city. We already have a map that shows future land use and zoning, which I'm sure will be updated once that's done. We have a map that shows the CIP projects that are in progress and upcoming. We have all of that. So, I think maybe, I know QR codes aren't super popular because not everyone understands how they work, and sometimes I don't, but if we had a way to show people, like, all of this is at your fingertips, if you're curious, you can find this information. If you're curious about our agendas or what we're talking about at City Council, here's where you can find an agenda, and if you click this little hyperlink, it'll take you to that packet for that agenda item. So, I think showing people how to use the tools that we already have is great. Jeanette has done a good job of the Sibolo Tomorrow website showcasing that on the city's social media, but I think that's another opportunity to showcase it, because that, the bond program information is fantastic. Has everything you could possibly want to know about the two bonds that we're proposing in November, but if people don't know it exists, then it's, what's the point? So, I think that, that meeting people where they're already going and showing them how to use the tools that we have, and then being available for questions, because one HOA's question might be different than someone who lives south of 78. They're going to have different questions, but we can have the generic, general information there. And I think, oh, to go along with the trails, another question I've been getting a lot of, from a lot of people is rentals. We had a list at some point, I can't remember where I saw it, maybe Peggy emailed it to us, but it was a list of all of the venues that we have available for rental for groups. And I found where we can rent out parks in the parks link on the website, but I couldn't find again where you can rent rooms or the information on how to rent rooms. And I know Chief Chancosa had brought to us a rental agreement, so if we could maybe talk about that too, because that's something people get really excited about, is that we have facility space available for rental for like HOA meetings and things like that. So, that, those are things that I've seen.
Like the Annex Building?
Yeah.
Right, and then Fire Station 2, we all have the training room.
And now, as far as the maps, I agree, those are good maps. They've worked really good on a big screen, like one of these screens, or like maybe a 40-inch monitor at home. Well, the trouble is, is with a tiny screen on a cell phone, it's tough to navigate, so...
Yeah, but if people know it's available, a lot of people don't even know those maps exist unless they stumble upon them when they Google, like, what district do I live in?
Yeah. Maybe we could feature some of those prominently on our website somehow? I don't know, maybe, just an idea.
Just had a quick question, so are 25 to 30, or even 40, attendees to town halls a poor turnout?
40 is a good turnout.
Okay.
Under 25, I would start to say you're trending to low turnout.
Yeah, and out of a city with 36,000-plus people, having 25 people show up is really sad, and it's a lot of work. I know our staff does a lot of work. There's copies, their tables are set up, it's all done really professionally, and it does seem like an inefficient use of our time and resources to continue on the way that we've been doing it. Not that staff has done anything wrong, it's just, we tried it, it's not working very well, so...
I want to say at least one thing here. Staff is here to serve, and if five people show up, we've done our job, and we are happy to have invested that time to be available for them. But when we see attendance like we did this past week for the Comprehensive Plan Open House, and we see people we have not seen before, then we're really showing that we want to inform and make available to the public the information that we want them to be aware of. And I think the Comprehensive Plan Open House shows that the effort was worth the squeeze, if you will. So, I've answered your question about, you know, what I would say is good attendance and what is weak attendance.
And once they sign in and we're capturing these names, are there email addresses? Are they being solicited, once again, letting them know there's another town hall, and just recapturing those old folks, let's say, from, you know, 2022, 2023, and adding more attendance? Or are we just collecting names for a head count and not recapturing them?
I had to look over at Kelsey Jordan Lee, if we do on the signup sheet ask for emails, I don't look at that sign in.
I'm not sure what the process has been for the town halls previously, since I haven't been involved in that. For the Comp Plan one, we just ask, we do provide or ask for contact information if they choose to give it, not everyone chooses to provide it. We have not yet provided that information to our communications manager, but we certainly can, so they can opt into any future communication.
So, I think it's fair to say, we have built a big database that would only be used for city purposes.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Cunningham, you mentioned earlier about, you know, what would people that live south of 78 be interested in, you know, and I think the Lower Seguin Road update, or redo the Bolton Road, and then, of course, this GVSD/CCN update, I think those would be interesting to people that live on that side of town.
Which we've captured on this slide, Mayor, is that you're just highlighting that?
Yep.
And they may have more specific questions about very specific things relevant to their property or drainage, or something that is only affecting them or just their immediate neighbors, whereas someone who's backing up to Santicos is going to complain about lighting or whatever. So, I think that we give them opportunities to have, we prepare for the generic citywide information that is relevant to our residents, but then we also are giving them the opportunity to ask those specific questions that they're curious about, that are more specific to them.
Yeah, maybe at Sibolo Summer Nights, we could, you know, use that big tent that we have, and then maybe just have a table set up that's maybe just called Town Hall, you know, the table, and has all the information that people can walk up to and read and talk to staff while their kids are playing, because their kids could be over there in a bouncy castle and having fun while the parents are learning, so... Any other comments from council? Go ahead, Mr. Moni.
Well, I'm, the oddball on this, I guess, I think we ought to take a moratorium away from doing these things for a year, and see what it, see what the result is. Drive people to go look at the city website instead, because we are spending a lot of time and energy on something, and we're beating our head against the wall, in my opinion. Would be harmless, I think, to take a break from it for a while. And it also occurred to me that sometimes I think, I walk into the lobby here at City Hall, and that could be a permanent sort of semi-permanent display place for some of those posters on easels, some of those things that we're wanting to, information to share could be always visible, available to people walking in the door.
That's a good idea, and also at the Annex, too. Does the public walk in the Annex very much, or not anymore?
I think they walk in for business, so if they have a building permit, a development application, they're walking into this, or code enforcement, they're walking in there. Much lower traffic count at City Hall Annex.
So, maybe both places, but definitely here. Katie?
And I'll just agree with Mahoney, I think that the traditional town hall and the way that we've been doing it, I think that we could do that once a year and be fine, but then also look for opportunities to maybe go out and be more in the community. If we're going to continue the town hall the way that we've been doing it, definitely no more than once a year.
Yeah.
I know that's a lot of effort, but if we have like a go-bag for, we hear about a HOA meeting, or we hear about something, that we can go out and have a representative there.
I think that's, will reach a lot more people that way. Maybe not at HOA, maybe like two people show up.
Siblo Summer Nights, whatever.
Something like that.
Take the show on the road.
Yeah. I know that requires effort too and planning. So I'll leave that up to your discretion on, on when that would be appropriate and how often. But I do think that going out is going to be, we've tried the town hall, they're not working. But I think if we go out, make people aware that we do have this information, we are willing to share it. Then by the time a year goes by, maybe they'll come out to the actual town hall.
All right, so any, any action on this or we good or? Did you need to vote for anything?
I would like to verbalize what I heard and then you tell me if I'm understanding your direction. Because it's not clear, but I think it's clear, if that makes any sense. If we continue town halls, I've heard one council member say, go to one per year. I haven't heard anybody else speak strongly about keep two per year.
Definitely just one a year.
Now, more than one.
Councilwoman Ritzel, did you have something?
The only thing I would, uh, mention, because I have a variety of presentations and conversations with folks, but, uh, we have a number of folks that are not necessarily computer enthusiasts. And getting the word out to them is rather difficult. So if anybody can come up with a blinding flash of inspiration on that one, it would help. Because I know that when, speaking to several citizens, tend the citizens to be heard, they, uh, were unaware of some of these areas. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, and, and while I'm hearing not more than one per year and maybe pausing on them, that's different than saying, go to where the people are. So we can go to the seniors, uh, center program, which is during business hours, rather than making staff stay late and all that stuff. And we have a more focused presentation on topics. And of course, we work very collaboratively with the coordinator, Stephanie, on what topics would the seniors like. And we could do an hour presentation or 15-minute presentation, whatever they think the seniors would like. And also, um, during Siblo Summer Nights, which was specifically mentioned, let's take advantage of that and have a booth that would promote some of this information that we would otherwise keep staff late, uh, spend lots of hours and hope that at least 40 people show up. So you're not saying, when you say, let's pause on town halls, to, to stop going where people are. I think it's a shift, it's a pivot. Let's see how effective we can be if we pivot and go to where people are. And also, you talked about, uh, the Brooks. So we could also visit with the Brooks to see if there's an opportunity to present information to their residents.
Yeah, Mr. Reed at the Brooks, they, they do events at least once a month. Like they did the Chili Cook Off, you know, not too long ago, I went and judged that. And, uh, there, there's other events they do there all the time, like a luau, you name it, they're always doing something. So we could try to piggyback on one of their existing events.
So that's, that's what I'm picking up in your, and I would also say a resident town hall is a general town hall. This is different than if, if council's working on a specific program and staff and councils of one mind that we need to do a targeted open house for a certain group of people. That's different than what we're talking about tonight. So that's not what you're giving me direction on, on pausing that kind of stuff. So right now, I'm, I'm not going to schedule a resident town hall. I'm going to work with staff to go to where the people are, target topics, and let's see what the outcome is. And I would say by the end of the summer, because Siblo Summer Nights runs through the summer, I'd come back, maybe it's in October after the budget's done and I can do a quick presentation. Here's what we are successful at, here's where we continue to see some struggles and did not see a return on the investment, whatever it may be. Is that all right with council?
Ms. Sanchez will be at the senior center tomorrow. Um, I know that, uh, there's a presentation going on. She can ask, I'm going to try to be there as well. Um, she can ask Stephanie and, and go around and ask the res- or the senior centers what they would, uh, what topics they would like, and that way she can pass along to you.
Excellent. Mayor, council, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Reed. All right, so no need for a vote, that, I, I think, I think you got an idea where we're at. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item C. Um, discussion action on approval of the qualification of bid tabulation and authorizing the city manager to negotiate contracts for on-call geotechnical and material testing services. Mr. Gomez and, no, Mr. Foose today, Mr. Gomez.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Uh, so tonight, I'm here to request authorization for the city manager to pursue the negotiation of contracts for on-call geotechnical testing services. Uh, in January, we submitted an RFQ and we had 11 firms submit responses by the due date of February 8th. Um, the three firms that were selected during the process was TerraCon Consultants, HVJ, Saw Central Texas, and Raba Kissner Incorporated. Um, these firms will be utilized on a per-project basis and the funding is available in the capital project funds and operations. Um, any individual task orders over 50,000 will require council approval. And so motion is to authorize city manager to negotiate contracts for these three firms. And I think, I believe the, uh, we provided council with the summary of our submissions and the scoring summary for all the firms that were selected.
Can you, um, explain why we have, why we're going with three?
So we're selecting three because currently, right now, we, we don't have any geotechnical services, uh, on contract. And with the amount of projects that we have upcoming, it is, uh, it's important for us to have more than one geotechnical firm on our chain for this. Uh, so this will help us with, uh, we're expecting to have four, four additional CIP projects next year. And we also have some other, um, stormwater and wastewater projects that we're going to be doing. So to have a variety of consultants and making sure that we can have everybody covering our projects is critical.
That's kind of how the, the county does it, they kind of have a rotation system as well.
Yes.
Um, so with these, are these going to be like an hourly rate? Or is it going to be a contract up to a certain amount?
So, uh, these will be based off of the cost of the projects. So typically, you're looking at about 2% of the project costs signed for geotechnical. It just depends on what the project size is and what the scope is. And we would request a proposal from the consultants and we would, uh, use that either to come to council for approval or get approval through the city manager.
So this, I'm trying to wrap my head around this type of contract. So the scopes are going to be specific to specific projects or is this, is, I know we had it, yes, please.
Councilman, uh, Councilmember Cunningham, what these are are master service agreements, which don't require you to spend any money. And then when you have a situation, they will issue a, a work order or another type of form of an order that says, we want your help on this one. And we don't have to go back out for RFQs and wait three months to do it. And so when that comes, and if it's over $50,000, it has to come back to you for approval.
Okay, now would this include like, um, it says geotechnical. Now would this include like, um, fun, like soil testing for founda- you know, to ensure against bad foundations, things like that?
Uh, if that's something that is requested, we, we can do any material testing with this that's required for the project that we're doing. So it can be anything from geotechnical services to checking densities on, on a subgrade asphalt, anything that we need, and doing cylinder testing for concrete.
Yeah, because we're, we're trying to make a concerted effort to ensure that foundations that are built in Siblo are, you know, here to stay, that they're, they're going to last.
Mayor, um, what we're talking about here are hiring engineering services, the specific ones that are on the screen, for city projects. And so if we were doing a public safety facility or a new animal services facility, uh, we could have services through these firms to ensure that the foundation's going in properly as far as the soil goes. But what you're referring to is a separate matter and I just want to make sure council is aware that these firms, under master service agreements, would not be involved in residential foundations or commercial foundations.
Just for the work we do, the buildings we build.
And, and Mr. Hyde was accurate. Master service agreement has no scope of work, other, it just has a scope of services. We would issue a work order for them to work on a specific city project, such as Tully Road.
Yep, okay, Councilwoman Cunningham?
And this might be a question for Mr. Hyde, and it might not even be relevant to this type of contract. But, um, I know there's a 50,000 limit that they have to come to council for those projects. Is this a cumulative 50,000 count or each individual project? If each individual project is $49,999, they're, they don't have to come to council, you could have five projects.
Right, state law requires it to be in the aggregate of a total amount of 50,000 for each project. So if you have Tully Road and then you want to do a, a sample on a road that's currently being constructed to see if they met your requirements, those would be two different projects. So you could spend 30 here and 30 there. But, but if any one of those projects went over 50, it has, for $1, it has to come to you.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, I'm going to call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve 12C as written.
I hear a second, will electronic vote now, please? Okay, vote passes 7-0. All right, moving on to 12D. Discussion action and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with JMO Modular LLC to purchase the modular office building for the Animal Services Department. Ms. Miranda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item in front of you is for the, uh, mod- modular building for animal services. The city issued an invitation to bid to solicit responses for selection of this building. On January 5th of 2024, nine bids were received. JMO Modular LLC is the lowest bidder that met all of our requirements. We recommend that, uh, city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with JMO Modular and to, to make the purchase of the office building.
Is that it? Okay, any questions?
No questions, super excited about this. Um, the only thing I'd request is if I really liked that bid sheet that we, or not the bid sheet, the tabulation sheet for the last RFP that we got. If we can get a chart next time to kind of compare what the responses were.
Oh, it, it's on the, in the agenda link?
Is it that? Because I can't tell. Oh, it's across the top, never mind, ignore me. Sorry about that.
Yeah, the thing I liked about this is that it's potentially portable. And so, you know, e- even, even when we do have the new, um, animal facility built, we, we can repurpose this modular office building. So I do, I do like that it's portable. Or something, yeah, I don't know, whatever's next. Okay, okay, so do we have a, a motion?
I make a motion to approve 12D as written.
Got a motion and a second, please vote on your screens. Whoops, I meant to say, nah. Okay, uh, 7-0.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Miranda. Moving on to, looks like you're on point for the next one too. Uh, discussion action on awarding a contract to purchase a portable kennel structure and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. Ms. Miranda?
So related to the same project, uh, the city issued an invitation to bid to, uh, receive responses on a portable kennel structure. Uh, we, we received one bid. And, uh, that one bid is for Horizon Structures LLC. And the, uh, the price is 56,743. Actually, 71,91 to include delivery of that. And, uh, they can meet our timeline for delivery. We recommend, uh, authorizing the city manager to execute the contract with Horizon Structures.
Any questions on this one?
Make a motion to approve 12P as written.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, please vote. Mahoney? All right, 7-0, motion passes. All right, Ms. Miranda, you're on point for this next one too. Discussion action on the financial year 25 annual budget development process and major milestones. Ms. Miranda?
I do have a short presentation for you, um, a PowerPoint that will wait for, to come up on the screen. As we get ready for our budget season, we are seeking feedback from council on setting the budget workshops over the summer. We've suggested June 18th and July 16th. Both are the third Tuesday of the month, so wouldn't conflict with our regular schedule. This presentation will cover the budget cycle, key dates, Texas economic outlook, headwinds as we go into the budget process, uh, significant revenue sources in the general fund, and, uh, requesting your feedback on these dates. The budget cycle typically spans from March to September and begins with setting council priorities and ends with an opportunity for citizens to provide input before final adoption of the budget. Our goal is to align the city's budget and five-year CIP with city council's strategic plan and our debt capacity. We will develop revenue forecasts based on historical trends as well as any known economic challenges and opportunities. City staff will develop their department operating budgets, keeping councils' goals and our budget capacity in mind. The city manager will pre- prioritize the requests and submit a proposed budget to city council by mid-August. And city council will hold public hearings on the budget and tax rate before final adoption in September. The up- upcoming key dates is March 16th, this Saturday, the council's strategic management workshop. On April 30th, we will receive preliminary taxable values. June 18th, budget workshop number one, if council confirms that date tonight. July 16th, budget workshop number two. July 25th, we receive certified taxable values. August 15th, we will, by August 15th, we must deliver proposed budget to city council. And, uh, September 10th is the anticipated date to hold public hearings and adopt the budget and the tax rate.
What time are you thinking, on June 18th and July 16th? Are we talking like 4:00 PM or?
That's entirely up to council. We have done, uh, some daytime budget workshops. We've also done evening, uh, budget workshops. So if council would like to get started early, that would benefit, um...
That, that's kind of how we did it years ago, remember Joel? Um, I think that's worked out pretty well.
It may not work with everybody's schedules.
I think we need more than two. Because I, I felt like last year, A, the meetings got long.
Yeah.
And eyes glassed over and then it came to the end and, and I still had some questions, so I...
Maybe do one in between, do June 18th and something in between.
Short and frequent would be nice, and I'd even like to see actual, you know, I, I hate to volunteer for my summer to be eating with budget meetings, but the reality of it is, I think if we have departments show up with their, with their proposed budget instead of this mass sort of thing and, and have actual Q and As about, well, you know, what, what are we doing here? We've got some other bad news coming, it looks like, on, on revenues. So we're going to have to actually, you know, it's not like the, oh, goody, more money this year. I, I mean, I think we're going to have to really take a serious look at this. And so I don't want to spend my whole summer here. But I, I think if we do short, targeted meetings with departments versus a two-hour, you know, a three-hour meeting that goes on and on and on and do just two of them, I think we're going to be a better position to understand what's going on, especially if there's adjustments that need to be made this year. So, I mean, I'm not saying every Thursday, but I'm saying it should be more frequent than two. And I would like to see a much more targeted, each department coming and explaining their budget versus just sort of a, here's the general fund, pull out what you can find. I mean, we found some, we found some things last year in the budget where, you know, CID officers were dropped in the, in the wrong bucket. And I mean, I just think there, we just need to do a, we just need a little bit more time with this than two meetings. Because after an hour and a half, almost everybody's attention span is shot. And, and I think we just need to do more frequent, smaller, um, amount of time. I know that's more time than each of us has in the summer, but I, that's my thoughts.
Well, I mean, we do these council meetings from 4:00, 6:30 PM until 11:00. I mean, so we're here, you know, right? So maybe three-hour meetings, I don't know, Mr. Reed?
Mayor and council, I, I think we're talking two different things. Now, the budget workshops are designed to highlight your priorities and to make sure that we're laser-focused on implementing your strategic plan. So it's always been the high-level things. If council wants to see the budget details sooner, we can provide preliminary, uh, budgets for the general fund, the other funds too, if you wanted to look at them. I don't think there's a need for a budget workshop just to go over line items. We can provide that to you and you can...
I would rather do that than a budget workshop because we know what our priorities are. What is, what is the actual money you plan to spend? How does those fit into the priorities? I mean, we're going to set the priorities in March 16th, we should all have a pretty good idea what those are. What, what we really need to know is, is the line items in the budget and how those support those priorities. And that we spend much less time doing, and I think we need to... those priorities, and that we spend much less time doing, and I think we need to spend more time doing that and less time of, hey, is this making, meeting our priority? I mean, I think we can look at the budget and see whether or not those dollars match with the priorities, and then we know both. We know what our priorities are, and we also know how those line items in the budgets are going through the priorities, and I think we need to spend more time in the line items and less time in the big overall picture.
So I'm just expressing to council, your budget workshops have been extremely effective for you to set priorities. Let me take you back to last year. This city had not prioritized fleet replacement, and you heard from Brian Huggins and John Wells for police, you heard from Mario Trancuso for fire, and Tim Foose for Public Works, and they took a lot of time to walk you through fleet replacement and why it was important that we incorporate that annually into our budget. To do that at a regular council meeting would have been, we would not have had the time to do that. That was a priority to make sure that we, as an organization, are providing the equipment that our staff needs. So there are a lot of things that we've done at our budget workshops. Again, if you want line item detail, I'm gonna ship that out to you, and then on a regular council meeting or at a budget workshop. We gave it to you two weeks ago. Any questions? So, again, two different things. I think your budget workshops are most valuable for you to get laser-focused on what things you want to implement. This year, we're gonna get laser-focused on how can we add police officers to the general, in the general fund, and that's not gonna be easy, given the constraints, fiscal constraints that we have. So I will take any feedback you have tonight, but I'm going to implore you to keep your budget workshops focused on your priorities.
Okay.
And you start that at your strategic management workshop next week.
Okay, Ms. Miranda, I'm sorry for interrupting. I just wanted to know the time on these two, but just please go ahead. Does anybody object at four o'clock? Can somebody get off, can we all get off a little early those days? Get off, yeah, right. Okay, yeah, the retired folks are off work. How about you? I know you work. Randy, you work? You get off by four? Katie? Did you sneak out earlier? Yeah, okay. All right, so let's do four o'clock, both those days.
Can I just ask a question real quick? So is it completely out of the question to actually have a meeting where we could do some line item discussion? Is that not on the table to schedule something like that? Because I, personally, being new on council, I felt that we were very talked to and talked at, and although we have an opportunity to ask questions, it just, the time wasn't lent itself to go through specific questions in order to get through the presentations from the fire department, from the police department, from Public Works, with all the fleet. So I felt we were at a disadvantage to really comprehend each line item. So for instance, to find out the ARPA funds that are not completely being exhausted this year, you know, where can we see those in advance? That way, we're not attending a budget workshop and attaching certain projects to certain buckets and not knowing where these additional ARPA funds were unutilized and what specific projects that came under budget. So I think it would benefit me a great deal to go through some line items, and I think if by me asking questions, others would also benefit in hearing those answers, too, so not afraid to be like one-on-one, but an open meeting so we can come to the table and say, let's look at the police budget, and let's understand why.
Yeah.
Why is it completely? So I would suggest a meeting on the third Tuesday of August. So a week after, you know, you've had the budget, you should have the budget before the first meeting in August in your agenda packet, and then by the third Tuesday, an opportunity to go over some of the details and have an additional third workshop, third meeting, third Tuesday in August.
I got no problem with that, but like Mr. Reed said, if y'all get y'all's, what y'all would like to him, he gets it to us, because I know that's what he's asking, I know that's what she's asking, I know that that's what I'd like to see also, is I see it before y'all just drop it on our table and say, okay, this is what we got.
Yeah, I think we've come a long way.
We see it in pieces before it's all put together. Is that what you mean?
And I think what we're looking for is for city staff to come to us with options and then ask us, what if we did this option? You know, what, you know what I mean? Give us some flexibility to define this budget and, you know, what things are gonna be spent, you know what I mean? What are we gonna spend this budget on? You know, and I think we're gonna get the preliminary taxable values on April thirtieth, so we should have pretty clear discovery of the budget amount. And as far as, you know, the preliminary versus the certified, is there usually a lot of difference or pretty similar, right?
There is.
Very similar. Okay, that's what I thought. So we're gonna pretty much have an idea as to how much money we got to spend here, and that's what we want to do, is just to have more input into the budget creation process, because like I said, we've come a long way. When Joel and I first started, you know, five-plus years ago, the budget we were given was take it or leave it. Those were our two options, really. And so I think we've really come a long way since then, so you remember, you were here back then, so.
If I may comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So what is on the agenda today are these key dates. And so what is most important is that she gets a budget prepared and approved by the council with regards to the parameters under state law. The city council is only limited in the number of meetings that it wants to have based on the seventy-two-hour notice of the Texas Open Meetings Act. And so if these dates are agreeable to you for purposes of our statutory requirements, that would be great. And as you go through the budget process, if the city council feels it needs another meeting to get more information on something, we can call a special meeting for that purpose. Call additional subject workshops until you, as a body, are comfortable and confident in what you're voting for. And so I would suggest that, you know, August, it's gonna come up really quickly, but at the same time, there's a lot of things that can happen between now and then. And so I would suggest that if you like this schedule, that we adopt, you consider adopting this or directing staff to use this schedule, but please, by no means, think that you are now limited in some way of not, of the inability to call more meetings if you want.
Right, so after we go through the June eighteenth, if we find out that, you know, we didn't get anywhere near is what we wanted to accomplish, we can always, you know, book another one in between June eighteenth and July sixteenth, just depending upon how much progress we do on the first one, but.
Correct, and we've always done during your regular council meetings, one topic here, one topic there. Those workshops are focused on budget.
Right, okay. So let's stick to the two that we have right now, and if we feel that we need a third, we can always add a third, but if we can do the four PM on those two dates so far, and then we'll play it by ear. Okay, anything else?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
To go over the Texas economic outlook as reported by the Federal Reserve in February, it indicates that Texas economic growth remains healthy while gradually reverting to a more historically normal pace of expansion following the pandemic. State job growth decelerated in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three. Fewer firms cited labor shortages as a concern and reported an improvement in the availability of applicants and the ability to retain workers. Texas firms expect wage and cost pressures to ease in twenty twenty-four while remaining slightly elevated. Weakening demand was still the top outlook concern for twenty twenty-four. Labor shortages, higher interest rates, and supply chain disruptions are lessening worries. And as already mentioned, labor market coming into better balance with labor shortages less of a concern. Input cost growth expected to ease, price growth likely slower to fall. Business cost growth, both labor and non-labor, is likely to decelerate further in twenty twenty-four. Wage growth is expected to slip to four-point-three percent in twenty twenty-four from five-point-six percent in twenty twenty-three. And non-labor input cost growth is also anticipated to fall to four-point-two percent from six-point-two percent in twenty twenty-three. So those are, that's good news. However, business expects selling price growth to remain slightly elevated, helping business recapture some margins lost in the high costs and high inflation periods following the pandemic. After a strong pandemic recovery, more normal growth is expected in twenty twenty-four. Employment growth is expected to continue, albeit at a slower pace and closer to the long-term trend. Inflation remains a headwind for Texas as growth in CPI for the state last year outpaced the nation. And Texas is expected to experience further growth this year, outpacing the US as it typically does. So headwinds or challenges that we're facing going into the fiscal year twenty-five budget cycle is the growth in sales tax is slowing as our economy normalizes after a period of high inflation. While our commercial growth continues, we outpace the state, but we have seen reduced revenues in the first few months of the year. Related to staffing levels, several, if not all, departments have indicated a need for higher staffing levels to maintain service levels both internally and to the public. Meanwhile, reduced funding for personnel reimbursement will be coming from ARPA funds in fiscal year twenty-five as we reach a milestone in obligating funds by the December thirty-one twenty twenty-four date. Additionally, continued inflationary pressures impact our personnel and supply costs, and retention of employees is impacted by compensation and the struggle to ensure we maintain salaries at market for our area as other cities in our area are increasing wages. And of course, as you're all aware, our capital infrastructure needs are something we discuss often, and we will dedicate time for discussing adjustments to our CIP during the budget cycle as well. Our largest revenue sources in the general fund are property taxes, sales taxes, and development fees, those three categories, with property taxes being forty-three percent of our general fund revenue, sales tax twenty-three percent, and development fees fifteen percent. Property taxes are the most stable source between these three, with a collection of ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of our levy every year. At the end of February, we were at ninety-six percent. Sales tax fluctuates with the economy. Our commercial growth in Cibolo continues, however, consumer spending is slowing. Development fees are also subject to fluctuation and changes in the economy, even while San Antonio remains the ninth hottest housing market in the nation. Our sales tax year-to-date in the last ten years is shown in columnar format in this chart, reflects the data. In the last column is twenty twenty-four year-to-date. We have collected now four months of sales tax. And the patterned bar, it reflects what we have forecasted for the rest of the year. This chart shows how we are doing against our forecast. The dotted line is the forecast amount, and the red line right underneath that dotted line is where our sales tax actual numbers came in. You can see that October came in right on target, but we were below target in November and December, and since this chart was updated, we've had another sales tax number come in between, or right under the forecast for January as well. We will be developing policies to specify what budget-saving measures we should take if we do have significant variances in budgeted revenues or from budgeted revenues. Building permits, development revenue that makes up fifteen percent of our general fund budget is down slightly from the same period in the prior year. You can see that the last seven months of twenty-three, though, made up for that. So the lower months in the, the lower months early in this year don't indicate a continuing trend necessarily. We may make up for the budgeted difference in the last seven months. I did want to provide this data in preparation for the upcoming budget cycle. As we want to, as we continue to gather data, we'll use the data to adjust our end-of-year forecasts or end-of-year expectations and develop revenue forecasts for twenty-five, and these forecasts will determine our budget capacity going into next year. So wrapping back around to the feedback that we're asking for council, as Mr. Hyde mentioned, you are not stuck with these dates. You can approve these dates for now, and then if we need more dates as we go through this process, we can always add those with seventy-two hours notice.
I'll make a motion to approve these dates, and the time is the mayor had suggested.
Got a second? Go ahead.
On this building permit year-to-date, it says slightly less than twenty-three. What, I mean, those are like, are by a hundred building permits, is that, is that true logic? Scaling about a hundred per day?
Yes.
So how much less is it in twenty twenty-four? This is like a number there, right? That that bar graph represents, like, what are we, how many under a hundred are we?
So what are we at, like ninety? How many we got?
Yeah, what is, I mean, what's the number? If it's per hundred building permits, right, and we're under the hundred, we haven't had a hundred building permits since October, is that what this scale's telling me? I'm just trying to read this graph. Could you?
Anna, were you going to respond to?
Yes, I was gonna try to put the chart back up, but I guess I can't put the chart back up.
Yeah.
There we are. To the bar one, I think, yeah, that one.
Yeah, 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 so what is that, what is that number, what's the total? I mean, if on the left is every hundred building permits, is that what I'm understanding? Hundred, two hundred, that's a hundred building permits?
So it looks like eighty.
So typically, our average for, our average over the last ten years has been about three, three-hundred-and-fifty.
Three sixty-five. It was right about one per day, is what I've noticed, historically.
Right, and you can see that in twenty twenty-one, we exceeded that with five, over five hundred building permits in that year. In twenty twenty-four, the first five months that are recorded is, if you compare it to the first five months of twenty twenty-three, and the colors match the month. So as. Right.
I guess if you put a log over here of a hundred, I mean, is that a hundred building permits?
We are less than a hundred building permits in the first five months.
Okay, so how many less? That number exists, right?
That's about.
That's about eighty.
That's about eighty-five.
I can give you the exact number if council wants me to email that.
Well, yeah, I mean, because that is a somewhat significant amount of money, right? A building permit on a home is not, you know, a pack of bubble gum, right? So I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to get an idea how much lower the number that we are, because this is a revenue issue.
So I would caution council from drawing a conclusion from this first four months, five months of permits.
Not drawing a conclusion, I just want the data, because when you have a line that you say is, you know, I just want to know what that number is. It's obviously a countable number. I just want to know what it is.
Yeah.
No conclusion being drawn.
And the chart in the PowerPoint, the backup data, the Excel spreadsheet has that number.
Right, that's all I'm asking for.
It's about eighty.
I mean, interest rates right now, seven percent, I mean, no wonder.
If that trend continues, our revenues will not meet our budget projections.
And Mayor and Council, it's my job to be responsible with the budget, and so when there are reduced revenues, I work directly with my finance director and with department heads, we will not exceed our revenue, so my job is to ensure that I have a balanced budget and that my expenditures are in line with the revenue. So that's what you've hired me to do as part of my job, and I take that fiscal responsibility very seriously, so that is something that Anna and I have already been talking about.
Yeah, might be a lean year. I mean, you know, you could ride it out.
We discussed this on a regular basis, how revenues are coming in.
All right, everybody voting? Who we got? Mahoney, Norma? All right, seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Miranda.
Thank you.
All right, next up is twelve G. We're gonna table this one. Do I get a motion to table, please? Can I get a second? Because he's not here. We're not doing it.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Please vote.
Mayor and Council, he was very ill and was trying to make it, but we said, you take care of yourself, so.
Totally understand. Well, we will be here next time. All right, next.
Mayor, and that'll be in April, because Jacob Parsons is not here for the next meeting, so we'll bring that back in April.
Yeah, it's not life or death. All right, next up is twelve H, discussion, action on the CIP overview and update. Mr. Gomez.
Hello again. So I'm gonna be giving a program overview and update of our CIP program, where we're currently at. So the presentation overview, we're gonna go over the five-year CIP program summary. I'll give a SWOT analysis and a SOAR analysis of our program, where we're currently at and where we're hoping to be in the future, the evolving CIP structure that we've had, and then give some updates on our current CIP projects and our upcoming projects. So tonight, I would like council to provide some feedback and direction on the following items. One would counsel support accelerating the construction of the four remaining roads that we have in FY twenty-five, which is Green Valley One. The construction of the four remaining roads that we have in F Y twenty-five, which is Green Valley One, Green Valley Two, Silver Wing and Firebird Run. How does council want to sustain quality control as the number of projects accelerate? So the options is using in-house inspectors, inspectors as opposed to using outsourcing. Uh, does council want to explore the option of adding sidewalks to the Town Creek Road project? And what additional information do you need during the F Y twenty-five budget process to gain clarity on the remaining funding needed for the FM eleven oh three phase two project? Just want to make sure that council is aware that we're not gonna be discussing any wastewater projects or any new subdivision development. With this, this probably update is just strictly for the C I P program. So the summary is just a brief recap of, that details the city council and the city manager's responsibility on developing and maintaining the city's five-year C I P plan. Sorry. Fast. Sorry about that. How far ahead? Um, so the C I P currently right now, we're, we, our bond proceeds is ninety-two million dollars, which is up. From the seventy-six that we had in twenty twenty-two, which is an increase of almost sixteen million dollars. As of December thirty-first, we've either spent or uncovered eighty-five million dollars. And which is a change from the forty-nine million that we reported to council in, in January of twenty twenty-two. And outstanding, outstanding debt related C I P is sixty-two million payable over the next twenty years. So the next few slides are just going over some of the projects that we've done with the past bonds. Um, currently right now, we still have the Town Creek Phase Two project, which is under construction and we're hoping to be completed with that one in June. These are some of the other projects that we've completed with past bonds. And the Tolly Road, which is currently under design and council has given their direction on how to proceed with that project. And the projects that we have right now, ongoing is Dean and Bolton. Uh, designed for these public safety facility, which is under design right now, we have. Some road improvement projects that are under construction and the fire and police equipment that have been ordered. So I'd like to get into the SWOT analysis currently where we see the current state of our C I P program. So some of the strengths that we see right now is our program development, the city council has done a great job of developing our five-year C I P program. Um, support and organization and the successful completion of some of our projects. Some of the weaknesses that we have identified is, of course, the project management side of things, we've uh. Been working internally to try to get a lot of the stuff corrected and tightened up. And short staffing has prevented us from, from fulfilling that. And one of the things that we will be discussing is the full cost analysis, which I'll get into. And then the opportunities and threats that we have, so to get a little bit more into detail. So when we talk about the strengths, our strengths, of course, is our C I P staff committee, our council's C I P staff, staff committee. And the leadership that we have in Cibolo that help us fulfill our obligation to the city, to the residents. Organization wise, we have a great culture here, top places to work and we allow innovation to, to happen within our program. Um, we've completed, we've been successful in completing projects over the past two years. And been able to do that within the budget and with the help of our, with our inspection team. Um, weaknesses, I think with the project management side of things, over allocated resources, we don't have a lot of staff, I think, or, or, we have three people in our staff. Uh, one of the things that we're trying to incorporate also is a software project management system and we're exploring some options right now with our city engineer. And we're looking at a couple of software management systems that we can use to help us maintain and capture all this data that we have for our projects. Providing a full cost analysis of our projects when presenting them to council, so. Incorporating everything that ties into the C I P project instead of just giving a construction cost number, incorporating the test cap and administration costs and the design costs for these projects. Some of the opportunities that we see is the, the project management team development, uh, retention and career progression paths. And then some of the threats that we have is the rapid growth here in Cibolo, the cost of doing nothing, infrastructure not keeping up with the growth and the rising overall project costs. So this is one of the items that I did want to touch base with the council on is the full cost analysis, so one of the things that I did notice when we. Provide council with input on projects, uh, we were always just giving y'all the construction costs and we weren't giving y'all the full cost of what a project actually costs and as a whole. And so the purpose of the full cost analysis is to provide the transparency of all the costs that are related to a typical C I P project. And the reason that this is important is I think it provides proper funding allocation without having to run the risk of these projects being underfunded. And having to find ways of finishing off these projects. Typically, when we're thinking about C I P projects, the construction costs, of course, that's gonna be scope driven based off of council's direction. The design is roughly about ten to twelve percent of the construction costs. Cap admin is about eight to ten percent and material testing is about two point five percent of that cost. So at the bottom, I gave three examples here of just some projects that I just drew up. Um, just to give you a breakdown of what the construction cost would be and then what the total cost of that project would actually cost. So going into our SOAR analysis, so this is forward thinking and our potential for our C I P program. Of course, continuing with our C, five-year C I P program, keeping up with that. And getting more of the community involved with our C I P selection projects, doing projects that our citizens want us to do. Uh, the opportunities, finding funding sources, uh, various funding ways of, of, of providing cost, uh, funding for our projects. Corrige payment management and utility coordination and then the aspirations would be to eventually have a full structured C I P team. Um, an infrastructure maintenance program and then the results would be project delivery, customer satisfaction and have a database. Where council and everybody can go in there and see exactly what we're doing on our projects. Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Mahoney has a question.
Just a real quick question, folks are watching at home. And some here in the room maybe that don't know what SOAR stands for, could you just take a minute to explain that?
Yeah, so the SOAR analysis, so the SOAR analysis, the reason we do this is to try to give a forward thinking and letting everybody know where, where the current state is. The SOAR analysis helps us project into the future on where we want our programs to go, so the S is the strengths, opportunities. For and aspiration and results, so this helps us see where.
Results, thank you.
Where the results are if we move forward with our program.
And then could you go back two slides, Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens has a question.
This one? Thank you, it's just something I was thinking about as you're progressing forward. I really like the layout of this C I P full cost analysis, um, it, it's so clear and so concise. I was wondering if there is a way that we could actually incorporate this as part of our agenda, like towards the beginning, whenever we get our C I P. Updates, um, just to share because it's always good to know where we're at, how much it is, where the, the processes in our C I P projects, it gives so much clarity in that way, we're just up to date with them. Uh, it just made a, it, yeah, it really resonated with me and I really like that and I'd like to see that uh, more available to us that we know.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So the strengths, of course, would be the community involvement, uh, one of the first ones that came to mind was the Buffalo Crossing, when I first got here, I saw this project come up. And I know how important it is to get this project completed and because of that, the community involvement and engagement that we got and the feedback, we're moving forward with this project. And we're gonna be installing bike lanes on Buffalo Crossing, not only to help with the traffic, but to help give pedestrians another way, another opportunity to go out there with their bicycles. Um, and this is part of the thing that we're incorporating with the N T M P program that, uh, we plan to bring back to council. Um, some of the opportunities is funding opportunities through grants, so the A A M P O has been a great resource for us, we're gonna be utilizing them to help us with the Town Creek Trail Project. Uh, they have other opportunities that, that they can help us with, one of the other ones that we're trying to go for is the Safe Streets for All Grant. And we're gonna try to be working on that one next and hopefully get something in, in front of council so that we can attempt to go for that grant. Um, payment management. So the most important thing with that is doing the right application at the right time. Uh, I think when it comes to payment management, that's pretty much where I, where I came from in my previous role. It, there's a lot of ways to preserve our infrastructure with just doing reconstruction projects. Um, there's different applications that we can do and the more cost effective way of doing things as well. Um, hopefully in the future, there, those are things that we can look at and moving into budget season and moving forward. Uh, utility coordination, minimize project delays, I know this was one of the big ones that we had on, on. Uh, Town Creek Drainage Project with the utility conflicts with A T and T, we had some issues with the storm, with the water lines and stuff like that, so getting that stuff identified ahead of time. And having utility coordination meetings with these agencies and letting them know the projects that are coming up. So that way they can get ahead of it and not wait till the projects three months down the road, if we let them know now what projects we have. For next year, they can start working on that and identifying the conflicts, so that's one of the things that I'm trying to do right now is identify the conflicts for the projects that we have for next fiscal year.
Like phase two, eleven oh three, you know, right now?
Yes, and some of the aspirations is eventually have a C I P team or we can have a project manager, um, a capital projects officer, which would help us with. Uh, getting, uh, helping out with community outreach, um, passing out notifications to residents, always solving those issues and then having. Uh, a few more inspectors to help us manage these projects. And then also looking at an infrastructure maintenance program, so based off of the P C I score, I know that in twenty nineteen, we reached out to L A N. I did get that information back from them and using that information, we could actually build a I M P to show exactly based off of your P C I scores. On what application to do at, at what score, so, um, we can range that out and then present that at some point to council if that's something that y'all would be interested in. And like I said, that's a more cost effective way of doing business than just focusing on trying to do reconstructions, there's other applications that we can do. To save the city money, but also preserve our streets and maintain them for a long run. And then the results, project delivery, quality on time and in budget. And then a project magic, management database, documentation and file preservation, uh, finding a more. Practical way of saving all our information and all our information from our projects in one source and having it scattered through different folders and having to track stuff down. We would have a database that where you can click on a project and once you open up that project, you'd find all the historical information on that, where the as-built were. Um, everything, every inspection report and everything that happened with that and that's one of the softwares that we're trying to work with right now and trying to get that on our, on our, at our disposal. So next is going over the evolving C I P structure. So currently in twenty twenty-four, the structure that we have right now, we fall under the Public Works Director. And our, I fall directly under him with the, with the help of my two inspectors. Uh, previously, we had the city manager serving as a lead, but we had the Public Works Director. And the Planning and Engineering Director both overseeing the projects and I, I felt like that isn't a practical way of doing things because they each have their own responsibilities. Uh, and it felt like prob, probably capital improvements wasn't. Um, being over, overlooked properly just because everybody's getting pulled in different directions, so now we have a structure in place to where. We have a C I P manager overseeing all our C I P projects. The only thing now is we need the help of council to possibly look at more staffing. Especially when it comes to the inspection side of things because the quality of our projects is very important. We need to have that constant oversight and without having the proper amount of inspectors to help us do that, it's kind of critical that it's important to make sure that we have that in place. So just to kind of give you a rundown of the C I P projects, so current, as you can see, the, the number of projects each year just keeps increasing, it's not getting any smaller. And the projects that you see here, right now, we have eight projects this fiscal year. This doesn't include the additional duties that the inspection team has, so they also oversee new site development and they also see commercial site work, so. Uh, in addition to this, these eight projects, I have two inspectors not overseeing these, but seeing subdivision work and also seeing the, the. The work that we're doing at our site developments with our commercial properties. So to give an update on our active C I P projects, I believe I gave this map and you should have had it in your packets. And this shows all the projects that are under construction, the projects that we have under design and then the projects that are being done using public works funds and in-house projects as well. So the Town Creek Drainage Phase Two Project on Hakerville, uh, this one's being done by Texas Sterling, we're currently at about seventy percent complete for this project. And we're looking at a late May completion for this project. Um, currently right now, we are installing the storm sewer on the south side. And at that end, we're also completing the flatwork on the north side of the roadway. Dean Road is being done by D and D Contractors. This one I'm gonna read by exception because the, when I put this PowerPoint, we're at forty percent complete, right now, we're about roughly sixty to seventy percent. Um, we're ahead of schedule on this project, so we're, as, as long as everything falls into place, we should be done with this project by March, but we had it on our schedule for late May. Um, Bolton Road, we're almost done with phase one of this project, so today we put down the black base. On the first phase of, of Bolton and tomorrow we'll be putting down the final surface and be doing a traffic switch to move into phase two of this project. Um, so that percentage would actually be closer to fifty percent complete. And right now, the substantial completion date for this one is early May, um, but we're, we're ahead of schedule on this project as well.
On this one, are, you're saying you're gonna lay down the final, I mean, are you gonna lay it? The final, are you gonna lay a coat and then whenever we do the entire one, we're gonna come back and redo?
Yes, so on this one, they're paving up to the end of phase one, just because we're gonna be doing some other additional work at that intersection at Zill Road.
Right.
So D and D, we, uh, they recommended that we pave the final surface up to this one, just that we're not having anything there, so.
So patchwork, okay, that's all I needed here.
Yeah, so we're not gonna have just one clean joint on it, we'll actually have it to where we stagger the joint so that way we're, we don't have just one continuous seam all the way to the bottom. And then Lower Seguin Road, we'll still, we'll be starting this project in early May and have a substantial completion date projected for early September. And so the upcoming C I P projects. So right now, we have two projects in F Y twenty-five, which is the Deer Creek Boulevard Project. And the Town Creek Boulevard Project, um, the cost that you see there for Town Creek does not include the sidewalks that I know the residents were talking about. Off, after the last council meeting, we did reach out to our consultants to, uh, look at that, so if that is the option, if that is one of the options that council is looking at. We can provide y'all with that cost and we can discuss that at a future meeting. Some of the other projects that we have coming up is both of our Green Valley Road Projects, our Firebird Run Project, Silver Wing. And we have two ARPA projects, which is the Green Valley Low Water Crossing and the Deer Creek Drainage Channel. Um, the other projects that we have through twenty-six through twenty-seven, that is one of the council questions, if that's one of, that's an option that y'all would be interested in looking at accelerating some of these projects. Um, up to funds available that we have projected for next year. And so right now, we have a funding capacity is projected to be right around ten million, uh, we've already allocated. It to be projected at five point one, so that leaves us with the remaining capacity of four point nine to accelerate projects up to funds available. Keep in mind, Town Creek and Deer Creek are already in F Y twenty-five, so those projects are already gonna be completed in F Y twenty-five. But the remaining four projects are, the construction estimate for those projects are at three point six million and those are programmed between F Y twenty-six and twenty-seven. Um, to continue, some of the street maintenance projects list that we have, uh, we, so those are the three. Preservation projects that we have coming up with the microsurface contract that's out for bid right now. And then we're also working with Colliers Engineering on the Town Creek Trail Project. And that one's estimated to be at, at a one point three million construction costs. And right now, based off of our last meeting with A M P O. Uh, we're projected to have that one at, at fiscal year twenty-seven, um, but that can be accelerated, it's just, there's some. Uh, we gotta complete the design for it and then there's also some conflicts that we're, that we're trying to work out as well. And all the approval process through Tech Dot that we have to get for this project, so, uh. We, this project can be accelerated based off of discussions, one of the questions that we asked was, is there an opportunity to accelerate it if we get ahead of schedule? With the design work and all the, and all the other thing, obstacles that we have with this and they said, yes, that is an opportunity for us, but for them, it's better for them to project it out. According to their funding schedule than to accelerate it and we're not ready to continue to start with that project. Some of the projects that our in-house crews are doing is preservation work on Benwood, Benwood Ranch, Green Valley and Turnis Zone. So they are out there doing some patchwork and repairing some base repairs that, that they see out there. We're actually doing crack sitting citywide, which is an ongoing effort. And Weidner Road is not complete yet, but the Loop Five Thirty-Nine is one that our in-house crews did complete. And so, once again, in conclusion, we're just seeking the feedback from council and trying to get some direction on if y'all would be interested in accelerating those four projects. And the inspections part of it, are, is this council consider hiring more inspection staff to help us manage our increasing project counts?
Okay. So, you know, the way I look at it is the, and I know it is good for us to be cognizant of the total costs for these road projects when looking at inspections, but in reality, that's a staffing issue. You know, I don't want to convolute these CIP road projects with a staffing issue. You know, that's separately, that should be held separately by our city manager and, you know, you as a CIP manager. You know, that's a staffing issue. Let's, let's look at the roads that need to be fixed. And I was just talking with Councilwoman Cunningham and she was wondering, you know, why, why these nine roads, right? And so we, we put it on the bond several years ago. And so the citizens voted to, to fund the, these road projects, right? And so the way I look at it is if we have, you know, let's say, let's say there's ten million dollars. If we have five point one programmed for twenty-five and then still four point nine left out there, then we need to, to get as many roads done as we can, you know, within that list of nine other roads. So that way we can start filling in that pipeline with other road projects throughout the city of Sibyllo, which have become a priority within the past, you know, five, over the past five years, right? And so we need to clear out this, you know, I guess, list and, and just get them done, is the way I look at it. And so I know that there are some concerns about, you know, which roads are in the worst shape and which roads it makes the most sense to, to move forward with. But I'll, I'll send it all over to Councilwoman Cunningham. I think she had some comments about one of these roads.
So Silverwing, I know, has been on this list and it's irritated me every time I've read it. I drive that road twice a week to go take my son to school. It's not in bad condition. I'm glad that you put Mill and Overlay on there. That calmed me down a little bit. I'm like, why are we ripping out that road when we have so many other roads? One thing that I am very frustrated about looking at this map, and this had nothing to do with you, it was way before your time here. When I look at the CIP map and the CIP list, there is one project in District Four. And it's a project that I brought because the neighborhood asked for help. District Four has the most residents. We have over eight thousand people in District Four alone. District Three, not to pick on you, or District One and Two and District Six have twelve hundred people in each. So we have District Four that has zero projects. And these other districts are covered. If you look at even the little map, I know it's tiny here. All of these road projects, and that's not even including Sibyllo Valley Drive that's not highlighted on here. All of these road projects are concentrated on Sibyllo Valley Drive. This has been an ongoing issue with the city for years and years and years and years, back when we had all at-large districts and all of the council members lived over on that side of Sibyllo. The side of Sibyllo off of eleven oh three gets forgotten all the time. Eleven oh three is in terrible condition because no one cared. Nobody lived off of it. Nobody made it a priority. It finally got on the priority list, priority loosely with Tech Dot. We're finally on the list for it to get improved. It's been delayed, 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 delayed. And now District Four, with the most people, no projects. That is very frustrating to me. It's very frustrating to people in my district. And we represent Sibyllo as a whole. I'm glad that we're getting these road projects done. I'm super pleased that the bonds are getting done quickly and that we have all of these things under construction. You have a very clear plan. This is amazing. I just, I need to air my concern that we are forgetting areas of Sibyllo because they are away from, from these areas. This has been like a ten to fifteen to twenty-year pattern of capital improvements being done on one side and not on the other. And we have the same issue south of seventy-eight where those are finally starting to get some projects done, but they've been waiting for years too. And it's not, we need to be equitable. Everyone pays the same amount of property taxes, no matter which part of Sibyllo you live in. My house might not be a five hundred thousand dollar home, but I pay property taxes just like everyone else. And everyone in my neighborhood deserves to have roads that are functional. It took two years, just about, just to get our, our manholes leveled out. That just happened this week. I had Public Works come walk my neighborhood and they're like, yeah, it's pretty bad. So it's, again, this isn't on you, this isn't on anyone. I just need to say this out loud so that it's aware and it's something that we think about moving forward, that we can't just focus on one area of the city because that's where loud voices are. We have got to focus on all of the city and spread it out. So next time when we do nine road projects, let's not have five of those nine road projects in one neighborhood or in one little area. Let's spread them out throughout the city because that's money that every single taxpayer is paying into. And it should benefit everyone, not just one little area. I'm glad that we're getting road projects done in general, so I can't complain too much. But I do think Weidner, the fact that Weidner's not on any list is abhorrent, especially with the fact that we keep approving neighborhoods off of that. We have Mesa West, we have Buffalo Crossing Reserve, we have Gatewood that dumps out onto Weidner. We have another potential, there's like three multifamily zoned pieces of property off of Weidner. What are we going to do when they come in? We get Town Creek done, okay, and it ends at Weidner. All these neighborhoods exit to Weidner. That is a problem. So. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure that the whole city is being looked at and not just.
Right.
One district, two districts that don't even have, if you add up those three districts, it's still not as big as District Four.
Yeah. And, and so, you know, the district map is changing. So, you know, these, this list, I mean, this is the problem with it taking from twenty twenty until twenty twenty-four to get, you know, even half of these nine roads done. You know, when, when, when we, yeah, when we passed this in twenty twenty, we were under the assumption that these nine roads would be done by twenty-two. Okay. So here we are, two years later.
I agree.
And, and only half of these have been done. So that's, it's not a problem, you know, it's a problem of, of slow, you know?
No, and I understand that. I understand that the process has been slow. Even with the new proposed council districts, there's still only be three in District Four. So, I mean, it's still really unbalanced and District Four is going to be quadruple the size of any other district. So the fact that it's still so low in comparison to the new district sizes is really kind of alarming. So I, I think that when we move forward in the future, we can't fix what's already been done. But in the future, moving forward, the CIP committee or whoever's making the decisions on which roads to propose for bonds or projects, we need to look at the condition because that's super important. I love that you have a pavement management plan as opposed to being reactionary, like let's prevent them from getting super bad. But let's also look at making sure that it's spread throughout the city and not just all concentrated in one area.
Right. And so when we did the nine other roads, we, we had the data from the citywide traffic, or not, I'm sorry, road surface condition study. And so what we did was we cross-referenced the, the, the poorness of the quality. So they had like a number, I think from one to five, I think it was. So, right. So a one is terrible, right? And so we looked at roads that were both in poor condition and had high traffic counts. And it just so happened that the roads that you've identified on the list are the ones that had the highest traffic counts and also the poorest road conditions. And so Sibyllo Valley Drive, you remember how bad that road was, right? And so that's why we did Sibyllo Valley Drive number one. That was our top priority. And so obviously that one is done. And so now it's time to move on to these other roads that had really poor conditions.
I just don't think you're going to sell me on the fact that Dean Road or Firebird Run has more.
You'd be surprised, yeah, I mean.
Than Green Valley Drive or Weidner.
You'd be surprised. It had a lot more than, I think, than Weidner. But we did traffic counts on that one. Chief Huggins at the time, he, he put out the.
Town Creek Road goes to Weidner Road. Like either way.
Town Creek has high traffic counts too, yes.
So, I mean, we're, again, can't fix the nine roads now, but moving forward, I would really like to have that be a consideration on which road projects we choose because taxpayers across the entire city are paying into this.
No, no, I, I agree. And, and so that's why we need to get through these nine roads, which should have been done two years ago and knock them out. And then we can move on to the list of eleven through twenty. And then that's when you'll have opportunity to put Weidner and others on that list. Did you have a question?
I fully understand the, the problem with districting, whether at the city or the county level. But I should point out that these particular projects over here, many of them are well over thirty years old. And that in turn drives the problems that you run. As we know, we have foundation problems, same situations that screws up the roads and the foundations. It's been in existence for over thirty years in those areas. So I appreciate wanting to support the entire city. But since in the past, the city has not been as enthusiastic for repair, this is what we've got right now. It's staring us in the face. So that's all, just, okay?
Yep. Yeah. So we're, we're basically playing catch-up, you know? Previous councils, you know, I'm not going to name any names, but they weren't, they weren't focused on getting these roads fixed. And so I know every single one of us that sits on this stage right now is very focused on getting roads fixed. And so that's what we're here to do.
So to answer the actual questions that he asked.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
So my, my two cents is this. I, I totally understand Ms. Cunningham. I'm not sure I understand Green Valley Section One, other than the fact that apparently it's getting ready to fail. It's probably the nicest road I drive in on a daily basis. No, Green Valley, that section between shirts, eleven oh three. But apparently it's got some issues. I'm not a road engineer, so I'll have to take their word for it. But having said that, my concern about moving these all up is that this comes back down to a budget issue with, we got to hire people to make sure that they're done right. It doesn't make any sense to me to move things up, not knowing if we're going to have people to even do that or have the money to pay for them. So that is my one concern about moving things up. We did discuss today a little bit that we're already short of inspectors. It was brought up in this meeting. It, it just seems kind of cart before the horse to authorize moving things up when we don't know that we have inspectors and that they'll be ready to go and inspecting. So if we are putting in new roads without inspectors, then we're kind of back to the same, same old thing. So maybe we could look to make that decision once we decide whether or not we have the money to hire new inspectors and how we're going to do that and then have that conversation. But I think this is a cart before the horse kind of thing.
I'm, I'm, I'm with you on the accelerating. I don't think that right now is the time to accelerate. I mean, we just heard that our, our revenue is lower than it's expected right now. So we don't know where we'll be in a year from now. Yeah, I mean, if, if we're, we're needing inspectors, get the, get the inspectors hired and, and make sure that we've got the projects that we're working on right now, make sure that they're, they're being done accurate. As far as sidewalks on Town Creek, I've already mentioned. And you've mentioned that we, we've talked to the ANPO for the alternative transportation grants that are out there. Absolutely, we need to look at that option of, of putting sidewalks in there, bicycle trails in there alongside them. Because those are both alternative transportations. Even if we were to put a walking trail on the other side and a sidewalk on the other side, something. And then as far as additional information, kind of blown away by the, the one on the, the Town Creek Trail.
One point three million, you mean?
Yeah, I've been being told that, yeah, we're on schedule to, to make it happen here this year, this year, this year. Now you're telling me twenty twenty-seven? It bites.
If I could add, we're designing the trail. It's Tech Dot that is dictating the schedule.
As far as the funding.
It is frustrating on our side.
Okay.
Okay.
And so, I'm sorry, we?
That, that's all I had. That's my two cents.
All right. And so, you know, the way I look at it is, you know, we, we want to move on to the next set of roads, you know, beyond these nine. Like I said earlier, we wanted these done two years ago. And so if we don't accelerate, all that does is delay the inevitable. And so we, we have ten million to spend. We're only going to spend, you know, five point one. So that means four point nine could reasonably be spent, which has already been budgeted on these additional road projects. Move them up, get them done. You know, what, why, why, why wait until twenty-six to do what you could do in twenty-five? Now, as far as inspectors go, that is a separate issue. That is a personnel issue. That, that is, you know, meant to be handled by our city manager. And I have the utmost faith in our city manager that he can handle this personnel issue and find people to conduct these inspections. I don't want to convolute and slow down the progress that we need to make to our citizens on these road projects, you know, because of a personnel issue or even a perceived personnel issue that may or may not exist in the spring of twenty-four when we're looking at these projects to begin in, at financial year twenty-five. And so we need to make progress, you know? The, the time to sit around and, and, and wait two years to get done what we need to get done two years ago doesn't make sense. So that's my two cents on getting these projects done. Katie?
So just one clarification question. On the inspectors, are you saying that on the organizational chart, it shows two inspectors? Are those two vacant or are you saying we need additional?
So currently, right now, we have one inspector. We just hired a second one that will be starting. Our old inspector got promoted to superintendent. So right now, I'm working with one inspector and our new one starts on Monday.
Okay.
So right now, we have two inspectors overseeing all our projects.
So realistically, how many inspectors would be needed if we did accelerate this?
If we had a total of four inspectors total, I think that would help us a lot with overseeing not only the CIP projects, but also overseeing the new development and all the commercial site work that.
Okay. Is there any option of cross-training, having someone be something slash inspector?
Yeah. So the, so the employee that we actually hired is from our in-house, from our drainage department. So yes, that is an opportunity to do that. And that is something that I'm willing to, to take on if, if we do have that opportunity to help train our in-house staffs that I want positions to come available. They know what to expect and, and what to look for on these projects.
Okay.
And a lot of times I like to look for people like that because they have construction knowledge and they're doing the work. So they actually know what they need to be looking for when they're inspecting these projects.
Okay. So to add the new positions, if we do need to add two new positions or come up with a training structure to cross-drain, that would be implemented in the FY twenty-five budget?
Correct. Well, every budget, you have position control. So if you give me two hundred positions, I don't go hire two inspectors in the middle of the year and create two hundred and two. So it would be part of the FY twenty-five budget process.
Okay.
You can always do that ahead of the FY twenty-five, but we're proposing that it would be part of the budget.
Okay. And then if it does get approved with the FY twenty-five budget in September, whenever it gets approved, what is a realistic timeline for hiring those and getting them in place?
There's two different ways of looking at that. And then one, one is that you don't authorize me in advance to start recruiting, interviewing and selecting and giving a date certain for starting. And therefore I have to wait until October first to start that process. That means not until January would they start.
Okay.
If there's consensus amongst council, and I'm not saying tonight, to start that earlier because you're going to fund projects in FY twenty-five, then you could also say we're authorizing the city manager to begin the recruitment and interviewing and selection so that they start October one. And I could do that. So those are the two ways that we would approach it.
So with, and also with the accelerating of the construction, what is the anticipated start time? I know there's a lot of planning that goes in ahead of it, but what would be the timeline for when the inspectors would be needed?
So I, I will say the, these projects, I know the Mill and Overlay projects were ninety percent complete with the design. The other projects were ranging between sixty to eighty percent completion. So we will have all these projects ready to go by October first. Just the timeline of putting out the contracts, I'd have to get with Mr. Fuz and with Mr. Reed to see when we would want, want to advertise those. But we could have a, a package built, ready to go to start construction in, in October. Some of, some of the benefits of putting all these in one package and doing a, a package with all these projects is that pricing-wise, the higher the quantity, the better pricing you're going to get from contractors.
Mr., oh, sorry. Oh, you finish.
Okay. So if, if we piecemeal this and do it one project a year, a four hundred thousand dollar Mill and Overlay project, you're going to get a high cost from a contractor because the quantity is going to be so low on a Mill and Overlay project. But if we were able to lump these all in as a one package, I think you, competitive pricing-wise, you're going to get a lot better price for these projects.
No, I'm, I'm good right now. What I was going to add is our design engineer for the road projects has the goal of completing the construction drawings by end of April.
Yes, sir.
So your question was, when is a realistic time to start? So your question was, when is a realistic time to start? If council wants to accelerate them, we can have those plans done by April. Staff would ensure that they're complete, would put together the ITBs, put those on the street by June, would get them back in July. We'd be in front of you probably September to award contracts. And those contractors would start about thirty to forty-five days after that. There's a lot of things they have to get in place.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is, they could start early FY twenty-five.
Okay.
And I would say that for all but Deer Creek. We'd have to come back to council, get more funding to finish the Deer Creek construction plans. But all the other roads designs will be done in April.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get these roads done.
Does this need a, it says discussion or action. Do you just?
Yeah, it's action.
This is, and we need a clear
And then call up the roads.
Direction from council on accelerating.
So I would like to make a motion to accelerate the construction of the remaining four road projects in FY twenty-five. And Mr. Hyde, how would I word something about either hiring inspectors or having? We have a budget process coming up, so it would either be
To include appropriate inspectors necessary to achieve the projects.
Yes.
Can I just get some clarity? I keep hearing that the personnel has nothing to do with these roads. Can the staff clarify that? How is it that the personnel has nothing to do with these roads?
They're not building the roads.
Well, we're cross-training inspectors. They're not building the roads, but we need inspectors to make sure that there's proper workmanship. So if we add two additional inspectors in, let's say, twenty twenty-six, are we gonna be overstaffed with inspectors? So, and I also, to the question of Mr. Benson, is like, how are we funding these additional? Is it because they're being cross-trained from other departments, that their pay stays the same, so we're not exactly hiring two new people, but cross-training them, so we already have that in place? I'm just kind of wanting to see where we're coming with that.
I don't think I understand the question.
Could I take a stab at? Could you go back to the slide that shows the total cost of a project? Keep going back. So council, to fund additional inspectors, the proposal is that in looking at total cost of projects, that under capital administration, so that's for construction administration, that you include funding by project for the additional inspector positions?
It's not working. No. It's not working.
And that's how these were already designed, because these go back years.
Yes, you can. So it is an appropriate allocation of bond proceeds to go towards capital administration. If you outsource inspections, that would cost you two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the value of a forty-hour in-house public inspector. In-house, with all costs included, including the cost of a truck, would be around ninety thousand dollars. So the value is much higher to have an in-house option versus outsourced, but staff is gonna follow council's direction on this. The cap admin that is shown here, the eight to ten percent, is if you outsource. So we recommend that you hire, that you authorize the hiring of public infrastructure inspectors, and that capital admin would be around the three percent. Am I correct, Mr. Gomez?
Yes.
And the projects you're talking about have already been done this way. They've been laid out this way. This is how the funding came in. We already had a construction cost, a material testing, a cap admin, a design that was all there, or these are all bundled in one bond and said, here, go redo Silver Queen.
So the projects we're talking about would be the issuance of new debt, and what we're saying is, in addition to the construction cost?
Okay, so this is new debt. This is not the bonds and the money, the CIP money that was bonded for these projects a decade ago, or whenever it was, five years ago. So you're talking about taking certificates of obligation to pay for these roads, move them up five years, and put in these new costs.
Correct. Remember, we were very clear in the last budget cycle, CBD cost five million dollars out of seven point five. Dean and Bolton combined took up the two point five million. I'm rounding those two projects up. We were very clear, and when you reimagined your five-year CIP, all the other roads, out of the nine roads, would be with new debt.
Yeah, we looked at our bonding capacity, and we all took the roads and we put them on, remember, we broke into groups of two last year?
That's right.
Right about the same time, maybe a little bit, you know, later in the year, but we all, we put it on the timeline. So we agreed on when to do these road projects, right?
That is correct.
And so we know these road projects need to get done. And so if we have the ability to get them done in the year funding, you know, the year twenty twenty-five, I mean, our citizens do not want us to wait to get road projects. They want their road projects done, like two years ago, you know? And I think we're convoluting our road project priorities with a staffing issue. You know, I don't, I really don't think it was appropriate to bring the staffing issue into this, because there's two separate issues.
So I'm gonna, I just, I just want to ask another question. So my motion was made on the assumption that these were already funded through bonds, that we already have the money aside. So if we're issuing new bonds, then that changes the way that I'm thinking about this. I still think the roads need to be done because we told voters when they did the bond that these roads would be done, and I think it's pretty crappy to pull back on that, but Right.
Also, Ms. Cunningham, the ten million that we borrowed was for all ten roads.
There's a motion and a second on the table with regards to the acceleration.
We can still discuss. You still got the ability to discuss.
If we're within that scope, but it sounded to me that going over the personnel issues is not
Right. I don't think the personnel issue should have been brought into this.
So can I withdraw my motion? Okay, I'd like to withdraw my motion. I would like to make a motion to, I hate to do this, to table to our next meeting, what I would like to see, and I don't know if you had it in this PowerPoint or not, but the, this table that you have up right now is fantastic. If you can show us that for these four projects that you're proposing to accelerate, and any other projects that you think should be accelerated, because maybe it's not these four roads, maybe there's another project that you're like, oh, we should accelerate this, that would be really helpful in determining this. I do want to make sure that you have the help that you need. We don't want to give you more work and not have enough staff to complete it, and then we're waiting on staff to be available to do it. And turnover is crazy. My division, we did interviews all day for my division. We're five people down in a team of fifteen. Not great. So I would like to table this so that, to the next meeting, get that chart for the next meeting, and have a little bit of a clearer plan on how we're going to get those inspectors, whether contracted or hired.
Sure.
Okay, so we got a motion to table.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor. Just for adequate and clear record, Councilmember Mahoney seconded the motion, and we need him to withdraw his second, and then we can move forward with regards to
So if you could withdraw your second, Mr. Mahoney.
I gladly withdraw my second.
Thank you.
All right, we have a new motion on the table to table this item, I'm sorry, motion on the floor to table the item. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote. You can change it, Mr., or you can change it, Mr. Hicks.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
That's why I vote last all the time, because there's gonna be a glitch.
Okay. Okay.
Motion to table.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. Who can't vote? What's going on?
No, it's the wrong motion. It says vote to approve.
Oh, okay, all right. Starting with Councilman Benson.
Aye.
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 Okay, ayes have at seven zero. Motion tabled, or agenda item tabled.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to aye, discussion presentation on the performance management program. Mr. Morris.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I hope you all are doing well. In preparation for your workshop this Saturday, I did want to go over kind of where we are with the performance management program while IT brings up that presentation. This does set some of the framework of the beginning of your workshop this Saturday, so I did just, again, want to give you an update on where we are with the program and what to expect for the coming year.
The whole thing froze up on us for some reason.
Oh, no. Do you want a paper copy?
Yeah.
We'll go old school.
And you don't get to see my wonderful transitions, but that's okay. So on the first slide, we talk about the overview. This is familiar to those that were on council this time last year when I gave this initial presentation when the program was created. Essentially, we're gonna talk about the journey to organizational and operational excellence. What is performance management? What do we get for tracking performance? And then we're gonna go into Sybalo's PMP itself, talking about the mission, the purpose, the history, implementation, reporting, and then, of course, like I had mentioned, what's next for this coming year. And then I'll leave it open to council feedback or questions that you may have. On the second page, you have a map that you all be very familiar with. It's one of Mr. Reed's favorites. It's the journey to organizational operational excellence. Working from bottom to top, in twenty twenty-one, we started with our values building from our employees. Twenty twenty-two, it was council's vision as well as departmental missions. In twenty twenty-two, we also did council's first strategic plan, which you all adopted in September. And then in twenty twenty-three, right after the adoption of the strategic plan, departments chose KPIs as well as implemented their business plans. And then twenty twenty-four, we're actually starting to do the actual reporting of that data from those KPIs that were chosen. On the next page, we're gonna talk about what is performance management. It's a structured program that essentially is inspired by the city's vision, built around the council's strategic plan. That's basically its core, as well as all the service area's mission statements and the performance indicators of those KPIs that they had selected, essentially to drive better outcomes. Basically, what the performance management program will do with all of that information is you're gonna review service area's performance to promote rapid and sustained improvements to achieve excellence, both in the operation and management of service delivery. This will also include commitments to continuous process improvements and documenting processes in service delivery. We'll also use real-time data to inform decision-making. So the ultimate goal of this program is to provide counsel with real-time data at any time that you need it. So for example, there will be some KPIs that will be provided in your presentation today, but a more in-depth look at those dashboards at your workshop on Saturday. But again, if sometime you say, hey, there's a KPI that I saw about, I'll just pick on utility billing since it's in this presentation. What are our current active accounts and what are our delinquent accounts? You'll see that real-time, and if for any reason you had questions for Ms. Miranda or anyone in utility billing, it's provided on the website. Ultimately, is the end goal. On the next page, what do we get for tracking performance? It's predictable performance. You'll know what the standard of operation is for employees at any level. So how many applications can be processed by any certain employee? It also sustained process improvements in service delivery. So if we notice that a process is going slower than it should be, then that will be a key indicator that, hey, we need to look at a process improvement workshop for this. It's proactive identification of trends and problems before they impact service delivery in a notable way. Identification of best practices, it's always changing. Workload indicators, so this will be a great opportunity for council to understand, hey, do we need more staff in a certain area because they're overworked based on these indicators that were established? It promotes employee development and then, of course, improves customer satisfaction. As far as for the Sybalo PMP, there's three steps. First step is training, which is what we're currently in, kind of the in-between step one and step two. This is where we get department heads comfortable with reporting on the KPIs that they've established. We do the routine quarterly PMP workshops, and then from that point, it'll go into incremental change where we start involving employees at all levels to own parts of not only the business plan, but customer service delivery improvements. And then, of course, the end is where the relationship building, which will always then cycle back to continuous improvement. As far as for the history, in twenty twenty-two, as I had mentioned, council approved its first strategic plan. Immediately following that in December and January of twenty twenty-two and then twenty-three, the business plans were developed utilizing that strategic plan, and then all the business plans were adopted by every department. In twenty twenty-three, in January, from those business plans, every department head decided on KPIs, and then I took the time to create a data collection form where all of those KPI and the data will be placed into, which will then, of course, go into dashboard, which I'll show you in a moment. In September of twenty-three, so last year, council approved the amended second strategic plan, and then we did produce the first annual report, which gave council an overview of all of the strategic goals and the progress that staff made in that fiscal year. Now, in the current form of the PMP, we're going into implementation and reporting. So again, if you look on the page where I talk about this, you'll have a finance department part of their business plan, specifically utility billing. Again, I just picked on the number of active and delinquent accounts. So you'll see that from the business plan, a strategic goal and a KPI were picked. From that, the Excel data collection form was created where all of their data would be input. And then the very bottom are now these live dashboards that will be created, which will essentially show trends over time, and they're alive and dynamic, so at any point in time, council and staff, or even citizens at a later point, can view these at any point in time and get a very nice overview of exactly what's going on at any point in time in this city. I think we may have some control.
And council, as we're getting the slides caught up, I want to emphasize that Dustin Morris has done an exceptional job of working with each department head to develop key performance indicators, right? Let's keep people informed, keep people involved. We are in the infancy of having every department having their KPIs and tracking that data.
Correct.
So this, this process of getting everybody on their KPIs, tracking that data, and getting a full year of data, and then year-over-year data, that's what Mr. Morris was talking about. We're in our infancy. There are some departments that are ahead of others, and that happens in every performance management program. So I just want to assure you that when he's talking about that real-time data, we're developing it right now. So what Mr. Morris and I have talked about is, a year from now, we should have year-over-year data. And I'm gonna turn it back over to Mr. Morris.
So for example, the top portion here, this was a year's worth, fiscal year's worth of data provided by the finance department, utility billing specifically on a number of delinquent accounts. And then as we started the first quarter of FY twenty-four, they've already inputted their data for the number of delinquent accounts for FY twenty-four. And essentially, what this will show, similar to Ms. Miranda's presentation over sales tax collection over time, this will show trends over time as well. So if at any point in time, council has a concern of why is this number so much higher than last year, this will be a great opportunity to bring those up in conversations, either with the city manager, respected departments, or as part of our normal quarterly PMP. Next slide, please. So as far as what's next, strategic planning is accomplished at all levels. Each individual plan that council approves for funding and accomplishes essentially leads into a higher-level comprehensive plan that shapes future decision-making efforts. So right now, we have multiple plans underway. We have the I-ten corridor plan. There's a downtown master plan in discussions, a parks master plan, if you can continue. All of those will feed into a comprehensive plan. And then, of course, there is the EDC strategic plan that's underway. All of these plans at all levels will essentially feed into council's strategic plan. The data that you all collect, the feedback from residents on the resident survey, all of these will help shape the goals and strategies that council identifies and wants to pursue in fiscal years. Essentially, we like to review the strategic plan every single year to ensure that old goals that are no longer relevant or have been completed fall off, and new goals that are of concern or that council wants to identify, or even on a staff level that the departments want to identify, are then added in and approved by council. Next slide. So as far as what's next, routine review of the strategic plan will occur annually in September. This will include the approval of any amended strategic plans. This will ensure staff at all levels are pursuing meaningful and relevant goals that align with council's vision. Departmental business plans will be adjusted annually to reflect any approved revisions from the strategic plan. There will be routine publishing of an annual report, which will accompany the approval of the revised strategic plan in September. So you'll have the revised strategic plan and that fiscal year annual report. September. So you'll have the revised strategic plan and that fiscal year annual report, and this year will be the FY24. KPI data collection will continue as normal. Dashboards will be updated quarterly to mirror the quarterly PMP meetings. And as departments adopt routine data reporting as part of their normal business practices, PMP will transition to focus on process improvement projects. So right now, I'm really focused on getting departments comfortable with the actual reporting, getting employees to be champions of the data collection. And then once everyone's normalized in terms of this process, we'll then focus on the actual process improvement projects. And with that, I would leave it open for questions or feedback from council.
Excellent report. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
And you'll get kind of a, I know you did one last year, and you saw it with your strategic manager workshop with Ms. Lee, kind of a mock PMP. I'm actually going to be presenting this Saturday, and you'll actually get a bit more in-depth, and there'll be more dashboards for you to look at and kind of see where this has already started. Again, we're in the infancy of data collection, so we won't see full trends over time. But for example, I'll pick on fire. We're going to be doing calls outside of our, I'm sorry, calls inside our ETJ, for example, which I know is a concern of council. We do have historical data on that, so you will see trends over time for a KPI of that example. But there are some newer ones where we have not started collecting yet.
Thank you, Dustin. You was very professional. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job. Any questions?
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks so much.
Can you table mine?
Okay. So can I motion to table 12J?
Make a motion to table 12J to the next council.
Second.
Okay. I got a motion, a second. Let's vote. Mahoney?
Are we doing?
We're gonna vote on the thingy.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Dick?
Yeah.
You gotta vote, sir.
You told me to table it, so I did. Colonel Hutzle, you told me to table it.
All right. So we tabled that one. All right. So can I get a motion to table 12K?
This one's my agenda item. I asked to table this because I need a little bit more data before I bring it. So I make a motion to table K.
Second.
Okay. I got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham and a second by Councilman Mahoney. Please vote. Seven zero. All right. Onto L. Discussion from council members that have attended seminars, events, or meetings. Start with Councilman Hicks.
Commissioners Court, they put out a RFP for hazmat spill cleanup and billing, and it passed. Reclassification of positions, taxpayers' office. It failed. ILA for the county, and New Berlin for a road project, it failed. The MPO, there was a presentation on the equipment for the SGR for automobiles. I know that Mr. Truncosso, or Chief Truncosso and Chief Huggins have always said, you know, there's a limit on the cars, and that's what they were discussing was automobiles for police is like every five years or every 80,000 miles, they'll replace them. But for heavy trucks, 10 years, 150,000 miles. Call for projects will be this September, October, and we need to make sure that we're putting in for sidewalks or the grants or whatever we need to do for that.
Can, can we look at that road that we put on the map from 11:03 down to Hickerville?
Mayor, I believe you're talking about a proposed change to our master thoroughfare plan once city council adopts it.
We have to finish that before we can do that.
And it's in our comprehensive plan. We can go to the MPO and...
Okay. Because October's a bit away.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor's meeting with the judge, I know that you showed up, but there was some discussion on future thoroughfare plan, working with the other cities in Techstock on that. AA MPO call for projects, which I've already discussed, having thoroughfares to be at the back of the building, kind of the opposite of what we do here. You know, you'd need the signage on the back of the building. And then discussion about the election results and how it could possibly affect our city and the county moving forward. And Mr. Forster, our county engineer is no longer with the county. So I'm taking up the spot for the MPO once again.
Yeah. Thank you, Joel. Dick, anything?
Well, the only thing right now that I've got a big schedule on, I'm gonna spend the entire day Thursday, bills and wheels, planning for the next year.
Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Norma?
Mr., yeah, Hutzle and I were able to attend the sort of painters' ribbon cutting this past week. They have a location in New Braunfels and decided to re, to open up an location here in Sybalo. They're Sybalo residents and owners of that, and they were excited to be back in our city to service the area, just making themselves known that there, even though they were in New Braunfels, they still service the area, so they opened up a location.
They sell paint?
Here. They sell, yeah, Sherman Williams paint, but they also service the area. They have painters, so they'll go ahead and paint residential, commercial. Also was able to attend Weiderstein Elementary Family Night. That was a lot of fun, just going out and supporting them and being there.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Katie?
I had meetings with residents, but nothing to report.
Robert?
Nothing here.
Randy?
Not necessarily a meeting, but that, that I attended. So this, on the 22nd, will be Weiderstein's career day. Mr. Reed has been more than helpful. We'll have our city represented there to the students. Chief, both chiefs will have our appropriate departments, police and fire there too as well.
Me?
It should, it should be a great, great event for the kids.
That's fantastic. Yeah.
It'll be, it'll be an all-day event, so if anybody wants to come out and join, I'll be there, both for the city and as a professional.
Sure.
I just, you reminded me, I did career day at my son's school, Jordan, and talked about council because my day job is super boring and nobody wants to hear about that. So I talked about being on council, and they're like, how much do you make? And I was like, $100 whole dollars.
They're like, wow, that's a lot of money.
And then we ta, I kind of ramp up to it by talking about taxes and how the city uses taxes to do projects and how council's role is to kind of help determine which projects to do. The city manager helps figure out how to do those projects, and then the city staff puts the money to work by getting the projects done. And so we were, when we were talking about salaries, and guess what? What happens to that $100 whole dollars? And they're like, oh, no, it gets taxed. So we had some laughs about that. So I don't know if we have any future politicians in that group.
Scared them all off.
They had some really good questions. And that was sixth graders.
Nice. TG?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. All right. Let's move on to agenda item. Discussion on items the city council would like to see on future agendas. I assume these ones that were tabled. Anything else? Anybody got any new ones?
I'm still waiting for something on Fordville and Sybil Valley Drive to light.
You, I sent the traffic impact study that night, the last council meeting. Did any, I sent it off.
Maybe it was too big of an attachment? I don't know. I don't, I don't remember getting it myself. But you, you got it, Katie?
I got it.
It's the night of the council meeting, so if you look back, I mean, if you did not receive it, I'm looking at you now.
Can you figure out where to put the light in between? Have we even called anybody that light is on? I got four people this week alone maybe that said, what?
Okay. Got it.
So we have had our technician look at it. It's working properly, but what I can, what I can do is...
I know it's working properly. It's not working for the amount of traffic that's on the road, and then you add that to the road that you can't take, it's a massive problem.
So do you want to put, put your suggestion as far as like 25 seconds or?
No, I'm not a traffic engineer. I just need somebody to go out there and watch it and say, gee, this doesn't look right, right? And if, and if you'd hit it all kinds of days, like at 5:30 in the morning when you're sitting at a red light, and there's nobody else on the road with you, that will make you angry.
I'll bring...
And it's a long red light.
I'll bring Chris Otto, our city engineer, and/or Tim Foose, who would bring a traffic engineer to your first meeting in March to discuss the intersection.
And don't they have like that laser?
I've been asking for this since...
Say again?
April.
April, not the first meeting in March.
I've been asking for this since like January.
First meeting in April. Thank you.
Could we maybe get him here in the second week in March? I mean, I've, I've literally been asking about this since January.
Okay. All right. If you want next meeting, we can do next meeting.
I would really like to get some answers because people are frustrated at sitting at a red light.
Keep thinking.
And then people are frustrated that the suicide lane has become a massive left turn lane. So, yeah, we need to get this addressed.
Okay. Randy, do you have anything?
Yeah. Legacy.
Legacy? What's that?
That's got to get fixed.
The curb.
The curb.
It looks good.
Looks great. Looks outstanding.
From the English Channel.
And, and we've been going on with this since November of last year.
Yes, sir, we have.
So let we, and, oh, we'll have it fixed by the first of the year. Well, we're three months into the year, and crickets.
Well, it fixed the whole portion.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it?
Sure. We've been simple to move on over and fix that second portion.
All right.
And Mr. Roberts and I...
Councilman Mahoney, you have anything?
There's an issue that I've been corresponding with Mr. Reed about, and I think, I think I'll leave it there for now, but it might turn to a little report.
Okay.
Couple more meetings.
Sure. Councilwoman Cunningham.
See Click Fix. I know that this is something a lot of people use. We refer a lot of people to that if they have an issue of any kind to report. When I'm looking on my app at the map and, and the different projects that have been completed, I'm seeing a lot that are open, or where the city has responded one time and said so-and-so is going to look at it, but there's no resolution. And so I would just be interested to see, since we have that data in what's, in a system, is there a report that can be generated that shows the percentage of tasks complete, the timeline?
Open tickets, closed tickets.
Open tickets, closed tickets, how long it's taken to close tickets by category.
In See Click Fix?
For See Click Fix, yes. And I, and it may help us with the budget season, season too. If there's a bunch of tickets open for one specific type of thing, like sidewalks, then maybe we need to put more budget toward sidewalk repair or towards staffing for sidewalk repairs if that seems to be a heavy-use thing that's falling behind. But I'm just curious about that.
See Click Fix report. You know, and, and on that topic, well, I'll just save it. I don't, I don't want to convolute things. All right. Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
Do you have a seat?
We're, no, do you have any items for the next agenda? Yeah, I am. Nothing for you? Okay. Nothing for you either? Council, Councilman Hicks?
No.
No? Okay. All right. So if anybody does think of anything in the meantime, just email Peggy, and we'll get them on the agenda review that we do next Tuesday. Make sure to get them to her by Friday at 5:00 PM. I'm sorry, Monday at 5:00 PM. Next Monday, 5:00 PM. Okay. Next up is N. One more. Discussion action on the review and confirmation of all upcoming special meetings and workshops, and scheduling the time, date, and place of additional special meetings or workshops. Peggy Simmons.
I just wanted to remind you, Saturday starts at nine o'clock, it's from 9:00 to 4:30.
Okay. We gotta be here all day on Saturday?
I'm here to talk.
Nine to 4:30? What?
You will have, there's only some stacks in the morning, and you will be able to...
Hey, you get a free lunch and a free breakfast.
That's a great break.
Pull the tax perk for you.
All right. Thank you, Peggy.
I also wanted to mention real quick that there's a free P&amp;Z ACOG meeting on March 22nd, if anybody would like to attend that. And also, the TML mid-year conference is happening this weekend. And let's see, I had it a little bit up. They had several things regarding infrastructure, water, the growth of Texas, the impact of all that. So a lot of great things that are going to be covered this weekend. Also...
We can't put this on dirt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I thought, I was just upcoming meetings that anybody would...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, upcoming meetings.
Okay.
Yes, just...
But are these city meetings? I don't know. Is this okay, George? Are these city meetings?
Well, I mean, Iowa's supposed to be special meeting workshops up at this council.
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, so is that still?
No, you're good. You're good. Sorry.
Okay. So, yeah, I just want to make mention of that. Yeah, I think that's about it, just for council to be aware of that. Thank you.
No, I agree. I, I sent that one to Peggy about the P&amp;Z for AMPO. No, not I, I mean ACOG. ACOG, yeah. And I was hoping that we could voluntold our P&amp;Z members to attend that. Okay. Did any of them say the yes, they're going to attend it?
I don't know. It tells me to be attending.
We sent it out, but they register on their own. I'm not sure who all is going, but when we have P&amp;Z tomorrow, we can ask if anyone registered.
Yeah. I'd like for that to be strongly encouraged, if possible. Thank you. All right. How about you?
Motion, sir.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.